Good evening. I call this meeting of the Planning Commission to order at 6:30 PM. Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Chair Reynolds.
Here.
Vice Chair Almond.
Here.
Member Coronado.
Here.
Member Neely. Member Radulovich.
Present.
Member Rothlisberger.
Present.
Member Santana. Member Goodman.
Here.
With Member Santana and Neely absent, Member Goodman moves into a voting position. Chair, we have quorum.
Thank you. Please join me at this time for the pledge of allegiance and rise if you are able.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So move on. Are there any changes to the agenda? Seeing none, I will accept the agenda as published and note that there is a study session scheduled for later this evening, but we will see how long the public hearings section of the agenda goes before making a determination on whether to continue into the study session. Item number four, minutes to be approved. I will call for a motion and a second on the certification of the April 8th, 2024 transitional and regular meeting minutes.
I move to approve based on the clerk's certification of April 8th, 2024 transitional and regular meeting minutes.
Second.
We have a motion by Vice Chair Almond, second by Commissioner Coronado. All right, and please press the button to vote on the minutes.
The vote is six in favor. The motion carries.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is public comment. For public comments that are general in nature and not related to items that are on the agenda tonight for public hearings, if you would like to address the commission under public comment, please use the sign-in sheet at the front of the room. And if you have not, I will offer an opportunity after those who have signed up. It's an opportunity to express opinions regarding issues that are not part of the public hearings on tonight's agenda. A separate opportunity will be provided for comment for any public hearing item. Each speaker is limited to three minutes in time, and we expect comments to be civil. The Planning Commission is not authorized, under the Colorado Open Meetings Law, to discuss comment or take action at this meeting on any issue raised by public comment that is not part of tonight's agenda. Do have one person signed up for the public comment. Pam Chadbourne.
Hello, Planning Commission. My name is Pam Chadbourne. I live a block and a half from here. So I'm here to talk mostly about the study session and ask you for leadership in planning. I'm going to say that's difficult because our city, I've been kind of watching for 15 years, and there's been no real city planning discipline or professional products displayed by the city. It was a practice the city first deemed it didn't need, and then when it did need it, it chose. It didn't choose people to execute true urban design and city planning. They did execute something, but it is not a well-founded planning document. And the reason for that is, for one thing, no alternatives or options were assessed or evaluated with pros and cons for we, the people, to assess, or for Planning Commission, or for City Council to assess, understand, and choose among. We had many alternatives. The ULUC that came out was the only one that was provided, and the impacts of that were never, as far as I know, produced, much less provided to the people. Now, your job is public service, in my opinion. You're here to serve the public and the city. I'm thinking of the, like, the three-fifth doctrine where instead of representing slaves, you're representing the people of the future, maybe to three-fifths. You know, let's say that the people of the future are not here, but you represent them to some degree. I would like to feel that my Planning Commission did that and my City Council, because you should. You should be doing due diligence on behalf of those people as well as us. So a product that depends on a few very selected, small groups of people, like the Littleton Boulevard proposed suburbia plan, and what they want, and then teases out one thing that maybe is possible, like, oh, there is maybe an idea for cutting edge, is not well-founded. And there were no alternatives presented with impacts and options. And that, of course, is what planning is. I'm going to tell you, planning is a technical discipline, and you're trained to develop models from the land use plan and the zoning map, in this case. And then you can extend, for example, traffic, financial performance, and parking. Those are the basics three we should have. And then you and we can assess the impact on the city and choose among them. That's never been done, and you don't have that stuff in the material provided. Neither do I. So we need that data to really do this. A kind of marketing plan wrapped up as a proposal is not adequate. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak during general public comment who did not sign in? Seeing no rush to the podium, we will move on to the general business section of the meeting. The first item this evening is a public hearing on PC Resolution 04-2024, approving the Powers Place subdivision preliminary plat. We will start with the staff presentation.
Sorry, I was waiting for it to show up on the back there. Good evening, Planning Commission. My name is Zarien Disneym. I'm senior planner with the Community Development Department, here tonight to present the Powers Place subdivision preliminary plat, also known as case number MAJ 23-0005. I'm also joined here by my colleague Kyle Morris from the Public Works Department. He's engineer there slash interim development services manager. Tonight, we'll be discussing the requested action from you all, the process that this project has gone through so far and forthcoming, dwell into the property itself, providing some background, providing some details on the application and the review criteria you will be basing your decision on, and then staff recommendation. So before you tonight is approval of a preliminary plat that is proposing to consolidate two lots into one lot, dedicate fire access, sanitary, and drainage easements, and then dedicate partial right-of-way along three frontages on West Powers Avenue, South Bannock Street, and South Delaware Street. You may be familiar with this site because you saw it in front of you about a year ago for approval of a conceptual master development plan back in January of 2023, which was approved by Planning Commission. They then submitted a site plan and subdivision plat for review. You are now seeing that preliminary plat in front of you for Planning Commission public hearing approval. The site plan is still currently under review, and if the preliminary plat is approved, they will submit for a final plat for administrative approval as well. So to orient ourselves to this site, it has three street frontages on the south along West Powers Avenue, between South Delaware Street and Bannock Street. It is one block west of South Broadway and one block north of Littleton Boulevard. It's about just under nine acres, currently undeveloped and vacant. There is some floodplain on the northwest corner of this property. On the comp plan, on the comp plan map, as you can see on the right, it is designated corridor mixed use. And on the zoning map on the left, you'll see that it's designated corridor mixed. The current owner of the site is RP Ham Living, who is also in the audience to take questions later if desired. So you will see an image of the proposed subdivision plat on the left there, which showcases the right-of-way dedication, the easement mentioned before, and the removal of the lot line. You'll see some other line work here as it relates to more to the site plan, as it shows the parking lot and the building being proposed there. In relation to the decision criteria for preliminary plats, there are three decision criteria needed for approval. The first is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the city code as detailed in the staff report. Staff feels that it meets the intent of the comprehensive plan as this plat will consolidate a lot that would allow for an apartment building to be built for rental units, and it meets our goals of housing diversity within the city. It meets the criteria for subdivision standards and through, because of the requirement of the right-of-way dedication when you're going through the preliminary plat process. It also meets the intent of our master, I'm sorry, our transportation master plan, which is what requires the right-of-way dedication along the three street frontages. Kyle can speak to some of those dedications and the classifications of the street as detailed in the transportation master plan.
Yeah, so in the transportation master plan, the three streets that are fronting this development are Delaware, Powers Avenue, and Bannock Street. Delaware Street and Powers Avenue are identified as neighborhood collectors, or connectors, sorry, in the transportation master plan. We have some guidance for ultimate cross-sections that help us achieve the goals set forth in the transportation master plan. And so those guiding cross-sections indicate a 79-foot ultimate right-of-way section along those two streets. So what we do with the developers and the development is we require them to essentially dedicate half of the difference between the existing and the ultimate right-of-way. So that covers the right-of-way that is on their side of the street that fronts them. And then that allows us to plan for future laneage and future bike lanes and future pedestrian connectivity. One thing we do in addition to the right-of-way dedication is we require the development to install sidewalks at the same width and location at those ultimate right-of-way sections. But the laneage and bike laneage comes with later full corridor projects, and that right-of-way dedication is provided to help us achieve those goals in the future. So that was Powers and Delaware. So those neighborhood connectors, 79 feet, and the differences quite along Delaware, there's a nine-and-a-half-foot right-of-way dedication. Along Powers, there's a 14-and-a-half-foot right-of-way dedication. Bannock Street is a multi-use connector, and that comes with, you know, similar ideals, but a 62-foot right-of-way dedication, or ultimate right-of-way. Bannock's existing right-of-way is 50 feet, so that results in a right-of-way dedication of six feet.
The plat is also consistent with the zoning district as detailed in the staff report for multifamily use in the CM Zone District. There is not a minimum lot area requirement, so it fulfills that requirement. And other requirements of the zone district are being reviewed under the site plan process, and it is in co-conformance with those regulations. It is also consistent with the Littleton engineering and design standards as set out by different standards that we use. It has also met the public notice requirements. Mail notice was provided to property owners and residents within 700 feet of the property. We sent over 800 postcards. There is quite a bit of multifamily residential in the area, hence the almost 1,000 postcards sent out. Signs have been posted on the property for the required amount of time on all three frontages, street frontages. There was newspaper notice provided, and no mineral owners are present on the site. At time of this hearing, we have not received any comments from the public during this posting period. Ultimately, staff believes that Planning Commission should approve this preliminary plat through PC Resolution 04 Series 2024. It meets all three review criteria. It is consistent with the approved master development plan, and the notification process is complete. That concludes my presentation. I am available for staff question, as well as Kyle, and the applicant team is also in the audience for any questions directed to the applicant. Thank you.
And does the applicant team have a presentation for this evening?
They do not have a presentation this evening, but are available for questions.
Great. Thank you. And that case will open the public comment portion of the public hearing at 6:46 PM, as with the general public comment. If you wish to address the Planning Commission regarding this item, there was a signup sheet in the front of the room, and we will accept testimony for up to three minutes per speaker. We have zero people signed up to speak regarding this item. However, is there anyone in the room who would like to speak on this, who has not signed up? Certainly.
My name's Mike Kohat, and I live on South Bridge Town Home Association, right on the High Line Canal. And I want you guys to know, the High Line Canal is very, very busy. One way or another, it's busy. And I love it. I think it's great. I think this development's a great idea. That development up there is a great idea. But we got a problem when it comes to mineral. Now, we got a light. We got to stop all this traffic. We got all these people coming down that trail. We're going to have problems. I think we can eliminate it if we go underneath. I did kayak from Lee Gulch all the way to the mineral bridge. There's a log jam just beyond the mineral bridge, but it can be done where the trail can go underneath. Just thought I'd mention that. So we're going to be picking up residents from that development. The trail's already being used, which is great. Got high school kids running, jogging, everything. It's great. Now, we're going to have some more of those little electric bikes. More people get those little electric bikes. We're going to be a little more busy. Just thought I'd mention that. If they could help in any way, let's go under. Let's get rid of the light. This way, we'll try to keep the flow of traffic moving on mineral. Just thought I'd mention that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Please come forward.
I'm Pam Chadbourne. I live a block and a half from here, and I think I have similar complaints or objections to this, as have been mentioned before regarding this site. Norgren has been mentioned, the Norgren property, as a great opportunity for Littleton, and I believe this pretty much squanders that opportunity completely. I'm just going to say a word about mixed use. So mixed use in our old or previous code was 50/50, 50% residential and 50% retail or commercial or some kind of business. This has almost no commercial. It doesn't supply mixed use to the neighborhood. The vision for Powers was an alternate to Littleton Boulevard for pedestrians and bicyclists. And part of that was to have these small amenities and residential infill along that corridor. This doesn't supply that at all. And also, the scale of this, the mass, the bulkiness, the fact that it goes around the whole block, three directions. Everything around there is nicely fit to create a neighborhood. There's multifamily around there, but it is what our previous code called human scale, and it had a character that created a neighborhood. It was something that people can walk among, bike among, and feel like you're in a neighborhood. There's open space around those. Many of it, much of it is parking. But you can see around the buildings and see what's around you, see your neighborhood, see the sky, feel the wind and the breeze. Look at the open space around Norgren. Well, this pretty much destroys that whole idea of that neighborhood and prevents the creation of anything that fits that neighborhood for, or would fit that kind of community for 80 years to come. So I object to that. I don't think it fits the neighborhood, and it, the mixed use, it simply doesn't have it. It doesn't supply enough mixed use. I also feel that, while I appreciate that Public Works looked at the right-of-ways around the streets, you know, there's not enough parking in this unit. The parking concessions given in the ULUC are excessive, and they rely on street parking. Well, the street parking there is already used, and so there's nowhere for the overflow from here to park. And once people fill up the parking, we all know that's not safe for bicyclists and pedestrians. So this is not safe in that way either. The floodplain exception also, I think, was questionable from the get-go. Narrowing this, the water flow that's coming from up above, we only know that water, storms are going to be more unpredictable, and there will be sudden flows or floods. And I think this area is at risk. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the Planning Commission regarding the Powers Place subdivision? Seeing none, we'll close the public comment portion of the public hearing at 6:52 PM. Do any members of the Planning Commission have questions for staff or the applicant?
So I suppose the first question I would have, there is a existing flood storage area on the southwest chunk of this property. What is being done to mitigate that?
There is, I guess, the flood storage, any required stormwater detention is going to be provided by the applicant. There's an interesting split basin through this site, so they'll have to provide water quality and detention on the north and south side of the site. If it's, if your question is related to the floodplain boundary itself, they are analyzing their effects to the floodplain. Admittedly, that's not a process that I'm super intimate with. I'm personally not a CFM, a certified floodplain manager, but they are going through our Water Resources Manager to get that sorted out. Believe, I don't, I'll have to let Kimmy Horn speak to this, but I believe, there's either a no riser, they've shown no impact to adjacent properties. And in that process of showing that, they also have to certify that post-construction with surveyed as-built and confirm those assumptions pre-construction.
And who makes those decisions? Is it us as a city? Is it a surveyor? Is it?
To accept it. Yeah, it's the city that, well, the surveyor shoots the data post-construction. The developer's engineer is the one who prepares the floodplain documents, and then the city reviews and approves all those, and essentially, I guess, not so much certifies them, but essentially certifies them that they're correct.
So as this exists right now, I probably don't get a really clear answer to my question, is what you're saying, right?
There will be no.
I mean, as this project moves along, it will be reviewed by the city, and it will be up to whatever codes that it needs to be correct.
Absolutely. They're, they will not be allowed to have any adverse impacts to the floodplain and surrounding properties by changing the floodplain boundaries. It's, it's not permitted.
It was mentioned that the Transportation Master Plan requires dedication of these. Can you go into how that works? I don't think I've seen this, at least on my time on the board yet, as far as it actually requires this to happen when, when we have streets that are insufficient, that we need to, effectively, we're making them give us space.
Yeah. So, I don't think it explicitly says required by the Transportation Master Plan. It's something that if we had a published Littleton Engineering and Design Standards, it would say, but it's, it's a common practice. It will say in LEDs as we adopt it and develop it. And yeah.
Do we have a timeline as to when those will be adopted?
LEDs, hoping by spring of next year.
Okay. So, it was mentioned that this was done, went through the MDP process. Do you know when this was zoned into commercial mixed use, this prior to the, this was at one point zoned industrial, I remember that. Was this done during the, the ULUC update? Is that when it happened, or did it go through like a rezoning process after that?
Sure. So, when the city did the comp plan update back a couple of years ago, it was designated the corridor mixed use, and along with the comp plan update, we did the citywide rezone with the ULUC implementation to align the new zone districts that were in the ULUC with the zone districts around the city. So, we did a citywide rezone in 2021 that then designated this property as corridor mix. Under the previous zoning code, it was, it was designated industrial park, as you mentioned.
Okay. This is kind of the only example of commercial mixed use I could find on our zoning maps that doesn't, isn't adjacent to what I would call a corridor, I suppose. This is, it's sort of a strange, I don't know. It's, it's an odd choice for this. I, I can kind of understand why it was because you're so close to Broadway and you're so close to Littleton Boulevard. It just seems an odd, an odd thing that it's the only one that's corridor mixed use that's not adjacent to a corridor. I mean, I understand, I'm guessing that corridor mixed use doesn't necessarily have to be next to a corridor, correct?
At this time, that question isn't related to the plat, so that might be for something for-
That's fine.
-different discussion.
I, I think that's all I've got right now. Thanks.
So, just probably a pretty simple question here. Appreciate you going over the, the details on the right of way and how that fits into the Littleton Master Plan or Transportation Master Plan, and, and the plan for the final designs for how those roads are going to be modified in the future to meet that Transportation Master Plan. Maybe this is me getting familiar with the process when I'm looking at, you know, what we're talking about in terms of the plat, right? And we're talking about 325 rent apartments. And I hear, I hear concerns about, you know, the, the neighborhood character and the parking and all that. And, and it seems to me at this point, we're just talking plat. We're not talking about the approval of the building and the parking that's being supplied for that or needs to be supplied for that. We're gonna, we're gonna review that as the developer, or after this is, you know, after they get the plat, and they can actually start to put together a more solid plan. This, this 325 is kind of a first, first cut at what we want to do versus what we're going to be able to do once we take into all the other factors of, of what we can put on this land regarding space setbacks, parking, all the other amenities. Is that correct?
So, to clarify, we are just reviewing the plat, which is, as I mentioned before, the dedication of the easements, consolidating laws, and the right-of-way dedication. That's really all we're looking at currently. They do have a site plan under review that does show the design of the building for the 325 units. Design of the building in terms of architecture, setbacks, open space, everything else, parking as well, that has been under review for a while now. It has, it's currently under the fourth semi-final review. So, it has progressed along quite a while. So, that is currently under administrative review.
Okay. Yeah, I just want to make sure that that's going to get its own attention for the, for the community-
Yeah, and sorry, I forgot to mention earlier, we did go through the conceptual master development plan that was approved a year ago, where some of this was already contemplated, and the community was noticed during that public hearing process as well. So, the site plan is in conformance with the master development plan, where some of this was already contemplated.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks for that presentation. As I recall, a year ago, when we considered the MDP, conceptual MDP, there were a number of questions and concerns that came up. So, I'm wondering if you could just, at a high level, address what, if anything, has changed since then in applying this to the plat? Some of the things that we had been concerned about at that time was the, it's a long linear building, and that there were not enough breaks in it. And I think that was a comment that we provided back, and it looks like it's still a long linear building that kind of encompasses the entire site. That was one item. The ability to recreate landscape, open space was another concern, and the edge condition of the building along the roadway. And since we haven't seen the site plan detail to the point that you've been reviewing, I just wonder if there have been any significant changes to that site plan that by locking in this plat, are we locking in changes that we're not aware of?
The site plan design is sort of unrelated to the plat. The only relation would be it allows for the dedication of the right of way, which would allow for the dedication of the detached sidewalks. As it relates to the design of the building, it would be unrelated to this plat.
I guess my question is, will the acceptance of this plat still allow it to be built the way that we anticipated it with the additional site plan review?
It would be if it meets the site plan review criteria and all the design requirements of the zone district.
Okay. Let's see. The, the graphics are, there's a lot going on on this, this plan. The graphics are a little bit hard to read.
I understand. It's really busy. The requirements of the preliminary plat requires everything to be put on the graphic.
Yeah, this is a very complicated plan, but yeah. I guess it might be the resolution of the drawing that we're receiving on here that's hard to read, but-
Yeah, hopefully in your packet, the preliminary plat is a separate attachment that should be bigger and easier to read, but try to ignore a lot of the line work there.
Okay. Not a question, but a comment. I know we've been talking about the engineering design standards for a long time, and really reluctant to continue approving plans without having something that the city can, that we can look to. So, okay with moving this forward, but we need to get that plan finished. Thank you.
Move down to the end. Commissioner Goodman? All right. Vice Charlemagne?
Okay. So, I think because this is a plat, as you keep trying to explain to us, I don't know that we've really approved a plat. It's been a very long time since we have, unless it was comprehensive, but it doesn't matter. So, I, I have the same concerns, which we're not really talking about tonight, which is, you know, when we looked at the first, the site development plan, the, the building layout and all that jazz. I understand we're not doing that tonight, okay? But will the next development plan come to Planning Commission, or is that an administrative approval?
Yeah. So, the site plan is an administrative approval. That is the detailed site plan that we are reviewing right now. So, you are able to see the conceptual master development plan that is some, very similar to the site plan, actually, but the actual, very detailed of it is what is reviewed administratively. So, you will not, Planning Commission will not see the detailed site plan for approval. You are welcome to look on our development activity list online to see the details of that site plan.
Okay. I think the concerns that I'm hearing, and I have these concerns, is, you know, some of the comments that we gave when we first heard or saw the conceptual plan, whether those things will be implemented. And, and I think part of it's because this is hard to see and confusing. And I did look at the packet. I mean, I did. It still was a bit smushed together for technical language there, but yeah, I think that's probably what's kind of tripping us up a little bit, or me. Can't speak to others, but it sounds like perhaps.
Yeah, understandable. I think you're seeing that line of the building and some of the parking stalls, and that's not really like memorialized by a plat. That'd be more for like the site plan review, if I'm understanding some of the comments correctly. Might be some of the hangup happening.
Okay. I don't have any other questions. Thank you.
All right. And thank you, Commissioner Radulovich, for asking my floodplain questions. I do not have any questions for the applicant or staff. So, at this point, we will, I will ask for a motion and a second on this preliminary plat item.
I move to approve Planning Commission Resolution 04-2024, which approves the Powers Place subdivision preliminary plat.
Second?
Was that Goodman?
Yes. So, motion made by Commissioner Radulovich, second by Commissioner Goodman. Ask for discussion, and I think this time we'll start at this end.
You've got just a few things here. This seems slightly backwards in that we're doing the plat after we've already done the MDP. It would, I don't know if these things can be done together if the plat, does the plat get, do we only recommend on the plat, and then that gets approved by council, or do we, do we do that, and it's done? I think we do that, and it's done, correct? Or we, we make the decision, and it's, and it's final, correct?
So, you're talking about whether, so the preliminary plat is approved by Planning Commission, and then, once it's approved, then the applicants can start construction, and then they will have a final plat-
Okay.
-that is administratively approved.
Gotcha, gotcha. Yeah, I think in, the one plat that I remember was, I think with the mineral, and it was done with a rezone at the same time, or it was to the south of it, which it feels like that should kind of be done first, and then the MDP done later. That's just, and that's neither here nor there, but I did look at the, at the, the hearing that was done before I was on this commission in January of 2023, and the, the MDP was, was approved there, so we will not see this again. This will be moved through the, the city's administrative process after we're done. So, just a few observations. This is like 38 units per acre, well under the 62 that it could possibly go to. It's actually even under the multifamily residential of 48, which is the maximum. And I think this is something that's probably a good thing because it is sort of a transition area, that it goes from a corridor down, downstepping a little bit, and then you downstep into, into, into something else, which is kind of why I think we might need to find some sort of zoning district that addresses that. I think in the future, we're going to see more of these areas that are zoned CMU and need some, and there needs to be some sort of step back from that, whereas on, on the corridor, you're going to have CMU, and then on, when it comes back, comes back a level or a block or whatever, maybe something that's slightly more dense than an MFR, but less dense than a CMU, because we don't anticipate the commercial will ever be here. I don't think there's any commercial on this property that I saw, at least, and I might have missed it. They're also providing 464 parking spaces for 321 units and four, there were four live-work areas as well. I would also like to just mention quickly that the last session had seven people show up. One of them was the, was the Chair of the Housing, the South Metro Housing, at least that's what it was called then, I think. One person who was not anywhere near this at 8417 South Reed, three people from the Business Chamber, one person from the North, North Littleton Promise, which is a not-for-profit that serves the area, and Ms. Chadbourne. No one who lived in that area actually commented. Tonight, no one who lived in the area commented. And it's on the people to show up. I understand that. But this seems to be a, for lack of a better term, underrepresented area. It's, and this becomes sort of a, a little bit of a circular thing as well, because it, it turns into, where do, where do we want to put density? Well, where density already exists seems like a logical spot to put it. But do you want to put it, do you want to put more density in an area where the streets may not be able to handle it, things of that nature? So, it's, this is a tough, it's a tough thing to get public engagement, I guess, and it's, none of this probably has anything to do with the plat, though, because this is a very technical thing. And as it's, as it has to do with the three criteria, I, I think that it, it does meet the three criteria. So, I will be voting in favor of this.
All right. Well, I'll add, yeah, as, as I recall, the, the mixed use character of this particular development from the MDP discussion was not so much the industrial use that occupies part of the site, but it had to do with the live-work that you mentioned, and also potentially the recreation sense. I think there's a recreation component to it, although that's supportive of residential normally. So, there was an attempt to do some mixed use within this development, I think. But with respect to the plat and the, and the criteria, I do agree that it's consistent with the comp plan. It does provide additional housing that the comp plan is looking for. It's at an attainable price point. It certainly improves the streets around there, which are a disaster right now. Undergrounds the electric lines, which were, I don't know if that's already been done, but that'll be a big improvement. And so, yeah, I think it, it meets the comp plan requirements. It's certainly consistent with the zoning, the mixed use zoning, and consistency with the engineering design standards. Again, since we don't have those, that's a hard one for me to say yes, but I'll go along with the fact that it's in, in work, so. Thank you.
Vice Charlemagne?
Okay. I, I agree that, as far as I can see, it meets the criteria that was, that we have to approve the plan, plat. Again, it does provide the attainable housing. Transportation definitely improves in terms of the rights of way, in terms of traffic. Don't really see much of an improvement, or, but that's not what we're talking about necessarily. It does meet the zoning requirements. Engineering, I know, I have a question about that. You keep saying, we keep hearing that this plan is going to be completed, but in, in all the packets that we have, it talks about that you look at all these different standards in order to make those determinations. So, will that comprehensive plan or engineering and, I forget what you call it, engineering plan, whatever, will it, will it just basically incorporate all the things that you currently look at? Will there be anything customized for the city?
It'll be incredibly similar. Sort of engineering standards are standards for a reason, because they work and they're dependable. And right now, we, we depend on- a reason, because they work and they're dependable. And right now, we, we depend on various documents, say, from like Denver C dot, to help us make those judgments currently, and by reviewing their standards. And our, our standards going forward will be extremely similar, because they're also extremely similar nationally as well. So, yeah. It, it, it won't necessarily be a, an incorporation of all those. It'll be in our own terms, language updated to, like, tie back to our city code, stuff like that, in our city process, but it, it will be very similar to what we use currently, in terms of other reference standards.
Okay. So the engineering design standards, I do know the name of it. Then, basically, will that make it easier for you, as a reviewer, as a staff?
Absolutely, yeah.
Is that the idea?
Yeah, absolutely. It'll, it'll have everything under one document. It's a, it's officially approved. There's, it prevents a lot of, I mean, there's no room for negotiation, but it prevents, I guess, the development community from feeling like there's room for negotiation in it. So it'll be hard and fast lines, and help, help engineering staff be able to operate efficiently, so.
Wouldn't it be easier then to not put in our packets the enticement of engineering design standards are being developed, and just say what, what you use to review? Because, you know, every time we come back to, well, we don't know what those standards are. So how can we say that, that those standards are met, other than you're telling us that they are? So we're assuming that they are. And clearly, a lot of them are black and white standards. So, okay.
Noted. Yeah, we can, I'll, I'll find ways to get, get more pertinent information regarding that for future staff reports, yeah.
All right. Thank you.
All right. And, yeah, I think just to kind of reiterate some points that Commissioner Coronado made, the preliminary plat does conform with the comprehensive plan designation, which did call it a corridor mixed area, even though it's not directly on a corridor, as Commissioner Rudulovich pointed out. And the proposed lots created by the proposed subdivision will meet the land area, open space, and other requirements found in the Land Development Code, and specifically in our subdivision regulations. And one thing we've mentioned in passing is that there are live-work units incorporated in this, which does provide an opportunity for mixed use. And those live-work units can actually be any use that is potential in the corridor mixed. It would be nice if some sort of retail or support services were able to operate in those, those live-work units. And the other thing that this accomplishes is providing sixteen units of housing at sixty percent of area median income, which does meet the Littleton inclusionary zoning requirements for providing affordable housing with complex, with residential development. And because of the conformance with the code and these other things I've mentioned, I'll be supporting this, and we'll activate the voting.
The vote is six in favor. The motion carries.
All right. This concludes item seven A on Powers Place. And the, my agenda here does say to call for a five-minute break at seven eighteen PM. We'll reconvene, actually at seven nineteen, we'll reconvene at seven twenty-four. And this five minutes is just to allow the folks related to this item to exit the room, and for applicant and staff to set up for the next item. We'll be back in five. Well, welcome back. It is seven twenty-six PM, and we are back from the, turned into a six- or seven-minute recess. The next item on tonight's agenda is PC Resolution zero three dash twenty twenty-four, which is the approval of Embry Mineral, a detailed master development plan for a portion of seven hundred West Mineral Avenue for a multifamily residential development. And just setting the table this evening, this is specifically for the multifamily development portion of the site. There is a proposed Costco located north of that, but that is not the subject of this evening's hearing. This evening's hearing is focused really on the multifamily proposal within the development area. So the way this will work is that we'll have staff presentation, and then an applicant presentation, and then we'll open the public comment, so that people will have an opportunity to speak, whether or not they did put their name on the sign-up list. Everyone will have three minutes to speak. And after the closure of the public comment period, will be a chance for the applicant and staff to respond to issues that were brought up by the public comment, and for planning commission to ask follow-up questions of both the applicant and staff. So with that table setting, I will move to the staff presentation, please.
Thank you very much. Before you this evening, I'm Jared Chipman, Planning Manager, here with the city. So before you this evening is the Embry Mineral Master Development Plan, detailed. So first of all, I just want to talk briefly about the master development plan, and how it's, we have two different types. We have the conceptual master development plan, which the previous project went through that process, and, which is a two-step process. It's conceptual, and then the site plan is a staff approval item. This one's a little different. This is a detailed master plan. So we basically have taken that master planning element and the site plan, and put them together. So that's what's before you this evening for consideration. Agenda, we're going to go through, you know, the purpose, background, application details, circulation plan, conceptual architecture. Then we're going to transition into the transportation portion of the presentation. Then we're going to come back to neighborhood outreach, application materials, staff analysis, and recommendation. Purpose, the applicant requests approval of this master development plan, which is a detailed master development plan, to allow up to three hundred and seventy multifamily dwelling units. This MDP is probably a little different than a lot of the ones you've seen, because the others are mostly in the CM zoning district. This is in the MFR zoning district. So a little different standards. And then the decision is based on the five criteria found in section ten, nine, five, dot, seven. Background, this is a seventeen point four-two acre site. It is the southern portion of seven hundred West Mineral. Currently, there is an office building. It was actually manufactured prior to being an office building, but was converted into an office building, and currently is vacant. It's, the occupant has relocated all the employees out of that site. So there's a, a large building with very little activity there. The southern seventeen-plus acres were, was rezoned in December. So that was a item that came before planning commission, along with a future land use and character map amendment request, that had to go through a recommendation process through PC to city council. So city council took final action on that in December. And then there's also the preliminary plat, much similar to what you saw this evening, but that preliminary plat was an item that came before planning commission in November and was approved. Application details, as I mentioned, detailed MDP, thirty-four sheet plan sets, multifamily residential is the, is the proposal for this evening, maximum of three hundred and seventy dwelling units, and which would include, per the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance, nineteen inclusionary housing units. So those, you know, units add a lower AMI. Also, on the slide, you can see a little bit of the site plan itself. So just a touch of orientation. Off to the right is South Park Terrace. So that's that north-south street. There'll be several improvements to that street, which I believe Kyle will get into here in a little bit. The clubhouse is in the southeast corner. There are several other amenity sites located throughout the parcel. And there's a main east-west corridor that most, that a number of the principal buildings front onto, creating a little bit more of a, of a streetscape. And then you get into several buildings off to the west. There are also smaller carriage homes to the north that create kind of a transition to that proposed commercial further north yet. And there's a northern access, or a west, northwest access point as well, that will traverse the commercial and allow people to access mineral. So you have two points of ingress and egress on this site. And there are also detached garages. Circulation plan, this is kind of busy, but you can kind of see the, the blue lines or the vehicular circulation. The yellow-orange are pedestrian, and then, you know, bike amenities are within the site as well. Conceptual architecture, so the MFR district does discuss materials, articulation, and facade, roof, et cetera. So staff has reviewed all of these based on those criteria. We also had, you know, there's also a maximum height in this zone district of forty feet. The buildings are a little taller than that. However, we do have a section of the code that talks about the average of the entire roof. So as this is a pitched roof, you take the median of that. So that does fall below that forty, maximum height of forty feet. And then I'm going to turn it over to Kyle Morris for transportation, or traffic overview, excuse me.
Thank you. Once again, I'm Kyle Morris. I'm an engineer with Public Works. We put together a few slides to go over traffic specifically for this site, since it definitely is a, a hot topic for the site and the, the adjoining developments as well. So in those, I'll go over kind of what we started with, with the multifamily trip generation study, which was used for approval for the fluck map amendment and rezoning. What we've progressed to now, which is a comprehensive traffic study that includes the multifamily development that's in front of you tonight, combined with the retail, so we can see a full, comprehensive look of those, those anticipated impacts. Also, look at some regional studies, city projects that we used to incorporate into that comprehensive traffic study, and give us, give us a scope for what we're looking at in our plans for the future of these adjacent corridors. And then just, just to note that, in, any of the adverse impacts that are found from this traffic study, the developers are required to provide improvements to mitigate the adverse conditions that they might cause by increasing traffic. And on top of that, they are financially responsible, so, so for all those findings. So to start with, just looking at the regional So to start with, just looking at the regional network around the site, you'll see Mineral Avenue to the north, County Line Road to the south, Broadway, which you don't see, but it's the, the north-south red line to the east or to the right side of the page, and then Santa Fe, the other north-south road on the left side of the page or the west. As you can see, the site, hopefully you can see it pretty well. It only fronts South Park Terrace. It's, it's only public right-of-way frontage, which is a suburban connector as identified by the transportation master plan. And these bullet points are some characteristics that are pulled from the transportation master plan. I know we've previously talked about today some specific numbers at what we look for, for ultimate cross-sections. But these numbers are more of identifying existing facilities. So they're typical right-of-way, what's 80 to 120 feet, target speeds of 30, 45 miles per hour, one or two lanes in each direction and serves local and regional mobility. For the city projects and studies that are around the site that we use to, to help, I guess influence is not really the right word, but I guess influence is a good word. To, to help guide our, our traffic impact study, Jared, you can leave it on this page, just to go down them. Number one is the Mineral Station West project. And these are all projects that are actively in design. Not, none of them are currently under construction, but they're all in design or there's also a long Broadway. There's a corridor study as well. Number one is Mineral Station West. It's a multimodal safety and connectivity project. It includes cycle track from the Mineral Station to the Carson Nature Center. Number two is the Santa Fe and Mineral Improvements. Other, more popularly known as the Quad Road. And that's, that is in addition to capacity improvements, many, many safety improvements. Number three is Mineral Station East Mobility Shed. There are two phases to this project. Phase one is going on right now. That includes the widening of Mineral Trail to include a cycle track and a pedestrian zone along Mineral Trail and then also buffered bike lanes along Mineral. That phase two will include intersection improvements to the intersection of Jackass Hill and Mineral Trail, right where that three is. Four is the Highline Canal Trail Crossing Feasibility Study, which will look at, which this one's not in progress yet, but it is planned to commence later this year. It is looking at the Highline Canal Trail, Highline Canal Trail Crossing of Mineral Avenue near Peninsula Drive. And that is the previously referenced look at whether it is feasible to grade separate that crossing or not. Project number five is the Broadway and Mineral Avenue Intersection Improvements, and that is an overall safety improvement project that includes vehicle and bike and pet safety. Number six, County Line Trail Connections. That is a multi-use trail project that will stretch from South Park Lane to Broadway and also have a connection down to the Highline Canal Trail. So this primary purpose of that is multimodal connectivity and safety, providing, providing safe corridors for bike competes to use. Number seven is a County Line Road Widening Project. It's further off the screen. It's, it's largely in Centennial and Douglas County. It's for a widening of County Line to, to lanes in each direction and providing sidewalks on each side. Number eight is the Broadway Corridor Study. That has been finished and the primary objective of this corridor study is to determine how we can incorporate more multimodal and transit to Broadway. And then number nine is our Broadway Fiber Phase Two Project, which is for, for fiber up and down Broadway and also down Mineral Avenue and County Line Road to connect signals. It'll, it'll allow us to upgrade our signal equipment for both active observations and operations. And this, yeah, that's good. So then we get to the, the traffic study after we've looked at our, our regional projects that are already in development. When we get to the traffic study, we work very closely with the development team's traffic engineer and we develop a scope. They're pretty standard from traffic study to traffic study. So for this one, like I said before, it includes traffic from both the multifamily and the anticipated commercial developments to the north, so we can have an idea what the full impacts of the development are and not just looking at multi, the multifamily in a vacuum. And so for this, we, we take, we start with taking traffic counts at various study intersections. We will apply growth rates to them and we pull those growth rates from Denver Regional Council of Government data, which is an intergovernmental planning agency that does a lot of planning models and helps us to predict future growth. We use that, we use those growth rates to, to grow this, the counts to a projected build-out year and a horizon analysis year for, for future proofing and future planning. These years for this project are 2028 for the build-out year and 2045 for the future year horizon analysis. We also incorporate several already known developments that are within the review process within Littleton, although the Dr. Cog growth rates do take into account future undeveloped parcels. So in a lot of cases, this is kind of double counting in a conservative application. Once again, incorporate city projects. So any of those city projects where we have additional capacity or lane changes, those are incorporated into the analysis scenarios. So when we look at the intersections, we look at it for delay time and queuing. There's specific thresholds for delay that are allowable. And then for the queuing, it's, it's the stacking of cars. And any excess queues, you'll see on the recommendations that, there, there are a few where there, it would lead to backing up out of an existing turn lane. So we require them to extend the turn lane storage to accommodate the additional queues. Additionally, where at the intersections where there's not currently signals, provide signal warrant analysis. Those are standardized to determine if a, a signal is indeed warranted. And for the specific application of the Mineral Avenue signalized intersections along the frontage, we performed progression analysis to make sure traffic can move smoothly through those signalized intersections. Once again, anything that is found to be an adverse condition from the proposed traffic on, on the roadway network, the developer is required to mitigate it themselves with heavy city oversight. And here's a, an exhibit that shows just all the intersections that were looked at as part of this traffic study. It is, it's, it's a pretty large one for the city of Littleton. It spans all the way from Santa Fe Drive on the west to Broadway on the east and it, and analyzes several intersections along County Line and Mineral. And this, this slide, this is my second to last slide, actually. It is just a call back to the trip generation study that was provided with the rezoning, just to re-provide that context where we did look at the proposed site in comparison to what the potential trips could be if they fully built out the site with its existing office use. And in that, there was a reduction in traffic shown for both the AM and PM peak hours, which is morning and afternoon rush hour. And this is a brief slide, calling back to the TMP and previous right-of-way dedications that have been, or single right-of-way dedication that was previously approved by planning commission. So going back to the suburban connector ultimate cross-section guidance, it is a 101-foot right-of-way. That is our specific guidance for that. So what the developer was required to provide is a 20.5-foot right-of-way dedication. That is to make up the difference from an existing 60-foot right-of-way to give a half section of the ultimate 101-foot. They were required to build, or they are required to build an eight-foot detached sidewalk in the ultimate cross-section's location. And also from the traffic impact study, you'll see dedicated right turn lanes at the site access or a single right turn lane at site access along South Park Terrace.
Thank you very much, Kyle. So neighborhood outreach, there was one in-person meeting and that was on August 29th. That's a neighborhood meeting, excuse me, August 29th of 2023. There's only one neighborhood meeting in this case because of compliance with the IHO ordinance, which does allow for a reduction in neighborhood meetings. So that neighborhood meeting was also taken into, or was combined with their neighborhood meeting for plat and future land use and character map and rezoning. So all of those requests were in that same timeframe. There are a number of documents on the development activity list, public hearing notices. Yeah, I think there are at least 479 notifications. I think there's actually more than that. Excuse me, apologize for that slide. Can get you the right numbers in a little bit. Newspaper was, notification was there. Notice signs were posted and then it was also posted at the city buildings. So you can see these two maps up here. The one to the right is the 700-foot boundary. And then in this case, there, there were some more notices sent out into the neighborhoods as well. Application materials. In the planning commission packet, there's the proposed resolution for the detailed MDP, the plans, project narrative and decision criteria narrative by the applicant, applicant's neighborhood meeting summary, tree inventory and coordination assessment, or excuse me, and condition assessment, and then the traffic impact study. Also found on the dial are a number of, you know, review comments and responses, title commitment, will serve letters and a host of other documents as well. Staff analysis, so there are two basic sets of criteria. One is the true criteria and the other is, is the content section. So in regards to content, and both of these sections are discussed within the staff reports. So we look at the context, location, scale, design, density, intensity, parking and circulation, streets, common open space, environmental protection, and then phases. So then for the actual criteria before you this evening to, to consider and to make a determination on, there are five. The first one is layout. So discussed a little bit about the circulation of the site, the bike and pedestrian amenities, the open space, et cetera. We've talked about some of those items. Quality design, this also goes into, quality design really focuses on that MFR section. And the MFR details out what they're allowed to do in regards to building materials, facade changes, et cetera. So that's really what we look at when it, when we talk about quality design. Zoning district conformance, so this is kind of the nuts and bolts of things. There's the setbacks, parking, the number of parking spaces, which they're in conformance to, and a number of other items. And then natural resources. So the site is currently composed of, you know, a parking lot that does have some trees scattered throughout the site and that's one of the reasons for that tree survey and conditions document. And then the ULUC does call out how to mitigate for any trees that are lost, that are deemed beneficial specimen trees for the community. So that document describes that. And mitigation, the developer has the option of, of either planting additional trees or paying a fee in lieu to satisfy that item. And then additional criteria specific to MDP detailed. And so that's a lot more of the site plan items there. Staff analysis, scale and development meets the MFR standards, also incorporates open space amenities and pedestrian bicycle accessibility. Layout considers breaking up the facade, that articulation of the building, varying building sizes and smaller carriage house buildings as well. Pedestrian vehicular circulation, safety is balanced throughout the site as discussed. The open space amenities include dog parks, pickleball courts and other, and the clubhouse with a pool and a few others that I'm sure the applicant will discuss. Then stormwater detentions located off sites and parking is incorporated throughout the plan. Lastly, staff recommends approval of the detailed MDP for Embry Mineral PC Resolution 03-2024. With that, I would like to note that we also have Brian Gardner with us too, if you have any economic development questions here in the future. But I'd like to turn it over to Jimmy McCloskey with Embry for their presentation.
Oh, I will get your PowerPoint up. Thank you. Jimmy McCloskey with Embry Partners. We're based out of San Antonio, Texas. And we mentioned before in a previous, when we were talking to the city council, we've been active here in the Denver area for over 27 years and we're proud to be a big part of the community here. We've done several projects in Littleton, but they were over in Jefferson County. So it's good to be here in the Littleton, city of Littleton and working with you all. I guess I just want to start it off. I want to compliment Jared and the team. I mean, they've been really good to work with. It's been a tough project. There's a lot, it's a big piece of land, a lot of opinions. But one of the things on our wall, when you go into the corporate office of Embry, do the right thing. And we feel like one of the things we pride ourselves on is going to the community, having a lot of open discussions. We actually had two community, neighborhood meetings. And there were a lot of opinions and it's a lot to take in. But we're fortunate to be working with Grant Nelson and the, the project he's bringing in. And we're excited to kind of bring the value of an Embry project here to Littleton. You know, one of the things you'll see when the site plan pulls up, but there's a lot of green spaces, a lot of connectivity. We heard that when we were in the public process, but, previous public process, but it's something that we tend to do anyway. And you can see some of our projects that we've done, Westerly, which is again out in, off of 470, wasn't required, but we did a big walking trail on the property just because we had some extra acreage. It's an amenity that's used a lot. And so here, more of an urban context, but the ability to kind of connect to the retail, but also to existing streets and roads. And so anyway, I want to compliment the staff and their support. And they've challenged us and I think we've met the challenges. We've worked through all these details. And I'm excited to turn it over to our team so they can kind of present the project and all the hard work that's putting into, let's kind of boil it down to this presentation. I'll turn it over to Marcus.
Good evening, Chair, Councilors. Thank you very much for this opportunity to address you. I'm Marcus Pockner. I'm a land use and community outreach for the team. As you can see here, all of the partners led by Republican Embry. You just met Jimmy. I'm joined by Norris Design and Kim Lee Horn will present today. We have three of us based on our specialty areas that will cover a little background on our presentation. And then our entire team is here and available to answer any questions that you may have. I do want to just focus a little bit. You all saw on the staff report and thank again to the staff for their very thorough presentation and process. We really went through, an earlier process where we went through the rezone and an amendment to the future land use and character plan. And concurrent with that, that actually ended up being approved in December of 2023. We started having discussions about this MDP. Actually, a lot of our neighborhood engagement really focused on a lot of the details that would come and rest here in the MDP. So we started that in August of '23 and then here we are tonight in April of '24 to present this to the planning commission. Context of the site, I think you all know it very well, but it's nice to see the 17 acres as part of the overall 63 acres. Those are half-mile concentric circles there, kind of radiating out from the site. You think of South, the South Bridge, the Neighborhood South Park Association, the Business Park, all of the areas right around us. Little look at, Littleton. Park, all of the areas right around us, Little, Littleton Academy immediately to the west, and then also just a five-minute cycle ride to get to the station, the remarkable trails and open space, of which comments have already been made tonight about what a remarkable site this is, and rests in some really great opportunities of open space and trails. As you kind of zoom in a little bit on the existing conditions, this is a vacant facility. It is closed, completely closed. It was probably a site that was more acutely affected by COVID than almost any other industry. It simply went away overnight, the use of this facility. In January of 2022, it was closed, there was an RFP that was issued, there were a number of groups that went forward. Grant and his team with Embry were selected in the fall of 2022, and we have spent 2023 and the balance of this year really focused on the planning and incorporating with the community to go about the zoning, and really starting to envision the site from more of a complete community viewpoint. I do want to talk about, when we talk community engagement, we are always driven by two things. The underlying plans, what your plans tell us should be envisioned at a site, and then what we hear from the community, and how we can practice kind of inclusive planning. I guess staying on the concentric outreach theme, this shows how we look at outreach. We always work with the most impacted neighbors, those immediately adjacent neighbors that adjust and live and office in this site. And you can see the community meetings that we've had, I would pull South Park and South Park Plaza owners into this site. They are our adjacent neighbors, they've hosted meetings, they've talked to their business owners, we've met with the apartments, the academy, the schools. It has been a very inclusive process to learn from our neighbors about how to incorporate our plans, and also to focus on pedestrian elements as well, to really serve as the anchor of this mixed-use development. Just a little flash, I'll let some of these owners talk themselves about this, but we had great, learned a lot from Littleton Academy. They were so excited about the infrastructure that's been covered and is coming to the site. South Park owners will talk a lot about that, and the engagement of complete community, and bringing in residential to this area. And then our continued work with Vibrant Littleton, again, focused on enhanced pedestrian connections and corridors, and how important this site is from a neighborhood perspective. I will transition here to Curtis Rowe with Kim Lee Horn. The one thing I will say about public engagement on the site, it has been focused on public improvements. There hasn't been a lot of issue about this use, it's been about, tell us about those improvements, that's why staff really went through that. But I'll have Curtis detail a little bit what we've learned, and then we'll come back and talk about the site plan.
Thanks, Marcus. Good evening, members of planning commission. I'm Curtis Rowe with Kim Lee Horn and Associates. I'm based here in Denver, I'm a traffic engineer. We prepared the traffic impact study. There were two components to this study. First off, the city of Littleton staff requested that we prepare a trip generation comparison for this specific residential user. And with this residential, as we were ahead of view before, with the rezone, comparing the amount of traffic that is generated by the residential use compared to what was there previously, being the office use, when it was fully functional with 3,400 employees, this residential development actually generates less traffic in the peak hours than what was once there. And so from that, as you heard from the rezone, that became a net positive impact relative to traffic conditions for the change from the office to the residential. But given that, as Kyle mentioned, we are preparing a comprehensive traffic impact study. This site is vacant, we know that, and so we're looking at all of this traffic as new. And what are those impacts with this new proposed residential development, along with a commercial that's proposed to the north of it? And so this is a slide graphic that shows the improvements that are immediately surrounding the site. The numbers marked with ones up there along Mineral Avenue at Mineral Place and Alati, both of those intersections will be signalized. So those are new traffic signals that are proposed at those two intersections. And then along Mineral Avenue, we are widening the eastbound direction so that we can construct, reconstruct the right-turn lanes, so that there will be a separated bike lane. Today, those bike lanes just merge into, or absorbed as part of the right-turn lanes, and so we're going to separate those, which will provide a safety enhancement for bicyclists along Mineral Avenue. In addition to, that's shown as that number two, and so that's actually done at all three of the intersections there, along Mineral Avenue, Mineral Place, Alati, and South Park Terrace. And then, as Kyle mentioned, there's the over 20-foot right-of-way dedication to accommodate the multimodal enhancements along South Park Terrace, with that being a suburban connector roadway. In addition, there will be right-turn lanes constructed along that roadway as well. And so if you have any other further questions about anything traffic-related, I'll be here and happy to answer those, but for now, I'm going to turn this over to Samantha to cover the applications and complaints.
All right, thank you, Curtis, and good evening, Commissioners. My name is Samantha Paul Miller, I'm with Norris Design, that's 1101 Bannick Street, Denver, Colorado 80204. And I'll be leading you through the master development plan in more detail. So now that Curtis and Marcus have given a good overview of where the site is located, our outreach efforts and some of the associated public improvements will now dive into the details of the multifamily portion of this community more specifically. The site was recently rezoned to multifamily residential back in December of last year. Along with that rezone, the future land use and character map was also updated to reflect this area as suburban residential multifamily. The portion of the site that we're focusing on tonight is approximately 17.42 acres, and is accessed via South Park Terrace along the eastern portion of the property, as well as an access road which will extend through the adjacent commercial development to the north accessing East Mineral Avenue. There are no additional access points proposed to the surrounding office parks to the south or to the west. A total of 374 rent apartment units are proposed, 19 of which are in compliance with the city's inclusionary housing ordinance. All units are distributed across a mix of three-story apartment buildings and two-story carriage houses. These include a mix of studio, one, two, and three-bedroom unit floor plans. There are 11 three-story buildings, sited to create pockets of landscaping and gathering nodes between them. In addition, there are six carriage-style buildings located along the northern property boundary. Many of the buildings are located along the perimeter of the site, so as to shield internal parking fields, as well as along an internal drive, creating a sense of place and arrival. The buildings as well as parking are also screened and softened through a series of landscape buffers and thoughtful plantings. In addition to the residential buildings, there is also a clubhouse and leasing center located near the entrance off of South Park Terrace. This hosts the community's administrative services, as well as resident amenities. All residences and the clubhouse are served through a series of internal private drives which access tuck-under garages within the buildings and surround surface parking lots located throughout the site. There's also freestanding garages provided throughout. Overall, the site provides 650 total spaces, or 1.76 parking spaces per dwelling unit. 443 of those spaces are surface, and 207 of those are garages. These parking numbers are in excess of the requirement, which is 568 spaces total, or 1.53 spaces per unit. In addition, 15 surface bike spaces are provided throughout the community, and additional bike storage is provided within a designated garage. Now, as this is a Class A multifamily community, it also includes Class A amenities for future residents, so let's talk about what those are. As I mentioned, the clubhouse and leasing centers look at the eastern entrance, this is shown as Area 1 on the screen. The building is approximately 11,000 square feet, and houses amenities such as the leasing office with two private offices, a mail and package room, a great room, a co-working space with private booths, a dog wash, bike maintenance center, and a fitness center. Exterior to the clubhouse is a large pool and spa, lounge areas, as well as other communal amenities such as a yoga and fitness lawn, fire pits, an outdoor kitchen, and various dining and seating options. In the northeast corner of the site, shown on the map as Area 2, is an active recreation zone, which includes amenities such as pickleball, two dog runs for both large and small breeds, grills, a shade structure, and seating areas. In addition, there are two park zones nestled between buildings internal to the site. These are shown as Areas 3 and 4 on the screen. These spaces are intended for gathering and passive recreation. They include amenities such as shade structures, grills, game lawns, seating, and enhanced landscaping. Other amenities include a 223-square-foot bicycle storage garage, which houses vertical racks for 21 bikes. These are in addition to the 15 surface spaces I mentioned earlier. There are also 16 EV stations located throughout the parking areas. And finally, I also wanted to note the, what we're calling the enhanced pedestrian corridor that connects the main entrance from South Park Terrace up to the adjacent commercial development to the north. This corridor includes an eight-foot sidewalk, which widens to 10 feet as it goes north into the commercial development. Okay, now focusing on architecture, all buildings reflect a traditional Colorado aesthetic, which with nods to craftsmen and prairie styles. This is characterized by hip roofs, dormers, and window groupings. Facade offsets help break up longer building planes, and are characterized by a variety of materials such as stone, lap siding, stucco, and patterned trim elements. Stairwells are open-air, but are concealed within corridors wrapped with additional stone and ornamental steel elements. Balconies are highlighted with metal railings, and garages are generally set back from the main facade, so as to reduce those visual impacts. Similar to the main residential buildings, the carriage houses are also characterized by hip roofs, metal railings, and stucco with decorative trim. The clubhouse is a single-story and is characterized by large windows and window groupings, a hip roof with taller tower elements, and a mix of stone and stucco siding. And then, again, when looking through the design and the character, it's important to reflect back on the approval criteria for the MDP. And these are, state that the proposed development prioritizes walkability and connections to green space. This is, this is reflected in a series of internal walks that connect buildings to each other internally, but also to the larger regional connections offsite via South Park Terrace. The proposed MDP highlights user and guest experience through thoughtful building design, building placement, circulation, and centralized amenities. This is reflected through the Class A amenities offered throughout the site and thoughtful circulation. The proposed MDP complies with both the MFR Zone District and the suburban multifamily residential land use character, by providing a high-quality multifamily community that meets established standards for density, building heights, parking, and architecture. This MDP also consists of any additional requirements outlined by code. And as for preserving natural features, well, there aren't a ton there to preserve, since this site is an already developed site. However, there are existing trees throughout that we would like to retain where possible. I believe that we're planning on replacing, removing, and then replacing 32 existing trees, but keeping 18. And with that, I'm going to hand it back to Marcus to wrap up our presentation. Thank you.
Terrific, thank you. Just our last couple of slides here, I want to note, and the reason we put this up for future applications, is really to reiterate the continued nature of, the most important part of the community engagement is that it's ongoing. We wanted to show here, is this part of the site maybe the anchor of the site that really pulls in the pedestrian uses than the retail to the north of us? We wanted to show these cross-sections. These are part of the discussions that we continue to have with organizations such as Vibrant Littleton, to really focus on how to consolidate this. So you'll see on the key there on the left, the pedestrian corridors that we're focused on, we added this east-west, kind of the fuchsia color there, internal to our site. We thought that was very important connection to South Park Terrace, and then really making that north-south spine there that turns into Alati Street. It is eight feet in our section there, but it then transitions to 10 feet. It was the suggestion of the combined community that we are working with to have a consolidated sidewalk on one side, to really provide kind of that enhanced corridor. And then you see some other, some future pedestrian plazas, other things. The reason we want to note this is to note that all of that area to the north of this goes through a very exhaustive process to come. Each site, each platted site, has to go through a site plan process and have two community meetings. So as each one of those go through, there will be a very thorough process, and the rest of this site, as it moves north, will go through that process with the same community. Just to show again, those cross-sections, they are showing the consolidated walk, the eight-foot sidewalk that transitions to Alati there, and 10-foot all the way through the rest of the site, and then the enhanced corridor, the east-west there, eight-foot with a five-foot sidewalk on the south side of that. Curtis and everyone has talked about the South Park Terrace cross-section, but also how important it is to really engage that, the only public right-of-way we have on the site. With all of that, we want to continue to show our commitment to the community for all their feedback to this site that they've really enriched. Our whole team is here and available for any questions that you may have. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you for that presentation. So we'll move into the public comment portion of the public hearing here at 8:11 PM. And this is an opportunity for those in the audience who would like to speak regarding this item, to have a chance to voice their opinions and get the sign-in sheets. So we do have a few people who have signed up, and we'll work through this list, and after that, will be an opportunity for those who did not get a chance to put their name on the sign-in sheet. So the first person we have on the list is Mike McKesson. And as with other public comments, we have our three minutes on the clock, which should be on the monitors.
Thank you, hello, my name is Mike McKesson, and thanks for having me here this evening. It's neat to see this venue, I'm a volunteer for Douglas County, on your side of the dais, and the different styles of how things are heard is, is neat to kind of see this evening. It's, it's good to get a feel for the different perspectives. So I'm Mike McKesson, I'm the elected official representing South Park Owners Association here this evening. I'm the president of the South Park Owners Association for a long time, I'm on my, almost 20th year, I think of that. I have Channing Odell as a, as a managing agent here this evening too, and Pat Dunahay as one of our other board members here this evening. So I would like to give my compliments to this applicant. We have met with them several times over the past year. I do believe that they, they do the right thing, and I appreciate that. I'm here to basically give testimony for what we had submitted as a referring agent to Littleton staff, and somehow it got convoluted with the subject line for the SIP 240001, and of course, it should be for this evening's hearing, which is MDP 23-0005. So we, the SPOA, submitted a letter to Littleton staff stating that, the SPOA, as a mixed-use neighboring community, encourages the redevelopment of the Lumen property into large retail and multifamily use. Properly managed and properly governed, it's a good development for Littleton. We stand behind that. I, I would like to note that this letter has several conditions for that, and those conditions aren't noted on staff's report to you all this evening. I believe they're rather simple, and the couple of highlights are, I'll read to you. The site planning should restrict and allow proper enforcement so as to prevent neighboring trespass. Multimodal travel should be planned along existing public walkways and routes. The SPOA would prefer that the existing fence element that runs east-west along the southern property line of the Lumen site remain, albeit not in a chain link with barbed wire form, which is not permitted by the city, but in a form befitting the nature of the upscale residential plan for this section of the site. Rod iron or brick pilaster similar may be appropriate. This fence that exists today helps prevent trespass, pedestrian trespass from the two neighboring facilities, developments, and there is a concern by us that that would continue in the future, and it's very important that you, the planning commission, help us sort that out. The other, I assume about running out of time, is that any proposed connection or expanded use of SPOA regional clear water quality ponds and detention should be reviewed and approved by the SPOA. There is concern that the increase of vehicular traffic will significantly impact the regional stormwater detention ponds. The SPOA has an existing over-the-road heavy truck traffic user neighboring this proposed development. Proper traffic planning for such expanded use of this development on our related public right-of-way should be designed and constructed. I don't know that I heard that from staff.
That is time.
There are some other items in the letter submitted. There are some other items in the letter submitted. I hope you'll consider those and condition your approval upon them. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person signed up is Channing Odell.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Channing Odell. I'm one of the adjacent property owners that Embry has referred to. They're at six twenty-one South Park Drive. My company also has an interest in seven ninety-one South Park Drive, the next building just to the west. There's an additional building, eight sixty-one, nine eighty-one, that follow as you're moving east to west as well. And as Mike indicated, my company has managed South Park Owners Association for a number of years, and we work for the board in that capacity. I'm here to just reiterate the fact of a need for a continued fencing that is between the properties, as Mike explained. There's an existing chain link fence with barbed wire there. It would be our preference that that not remain, but that a fencing of some kind or another be there to prevent people from coming onto the neighboring commercial properties. It looks like there's a lot of landscaping that Embry has provided, but corridors through that landscaping and onto our property and through our landscaping would be, it wouldn't be hard to establish that and come onto our property to make their way over to either the High Line Canal access or the Mission Hills Church has a recreational field. There's also some other parks within South Park that people might want to avail themselves of. We also, being on that side of the property, there is, we deal with excess trash dumping all the time in our trash enclosures that are there. I can easily see people not wanting to walk the distance to a trash enclosure that might be on the Embry property and just walking through the plant material and over onto our property to throw their trash away or throw a mattress or dresser, whatever that might be on a move-out day. I have taken the time to drive around to some of the Embry properties. They do look like they're well-maintained and well-constructed, looking on their plan that they have here tonight. I'm appreciative of the fact that the narrow sides of their buildings, except for one, are the ones that face our property, so we still have some site corridors to look out from our properties if you look to the north. So as Mike also spoke for South Park, I am conditionally in favor of the project. There is an adjacent property owner with an appropriate physical barrier such as a wrought iron fence with the brick pilasters that Mike spoke about or some other similar fence constructed of a quality that I think would represent this development. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Next person on the sign-up sheet is Elizabeth K. Marchetti.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Elizabeth K. Marchetti, and I live in District Two. I'm also a member of Vibrant Littleton, and I sit on the Board of Directors for the South Metro Housing Options. While the many new homes is an exciting prospect, I'm here to point out the lack of safe bicycle infrastructure in the proposed MDP. According to Section ten dash one dash three point eight point A, sub-paragraphs four and five of the City Code, quote, "All development subject to this subsection shall provide bicycle access routes between public bikeways and onsite bicycle parking areas. Sites shall be designed to avoid or minimize all conflicting bike motor vehicle and bike pedestrian movements. The minimum width of improvements on private property for bikeways or shared-use paths is ten feet," end quote. The code also instructs the following regarding design: "That bikeways, quote, 'be clearly distinguishable from vehicular traffic lanes by painted markings, raised paving height, decorative bollards, change in pavement material or color and/or flashing caution signs.'" According to Section ten dash nine dash five point seven, sub-paragraphs B to F, Master Development Plan, MDPs are required to illustrate the network of pedestrian and bicycle improvements. None of the cross-section graphics show where bicycles fit in the right-of-way within the site. The MDP depicts an eight-foot wide walk on the west side of South Park Terrace and on the south side of the new east-west entry street. The MDP's pedestrian circulation exhibit on page thirty-two doesn't depict or discuss any bicycle pathways, facilities or improvements. If these eight-foot walks are for peds and cyclists, then they're dangerous designs. The Federal Highway Administration recommends ten feet as the minimum width for shared-use paths. Considering City Council's focus on making Littleton's streets safe for everyone and not just convenient for drivers, I beg you to be a part of ensuring that new development in Littleton has its safest infrastructure right from the start. The standards that ensure people's safety must apply. Please instruct the applicant to revise the plan so that all streets safely accommodate bicycles. They should also revise the circulation exhibit so that it includes a depiction of bicycle routes to and through the site, along with bollards, striping, signage and any special pavement for those routes. This site is overparked, and there is space for safe infrastructure. At a minimum, please recommend an approval conditioned only on these safe design changes. Without these changes, the planning commission should recommend denial, as the MDP does not comply with the two above relevant sections of City Code. Our city has an opportunity with this important development to set a higher bar that prioritizes the safety of people outside of cars. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. That was the last person we have on the sign-in sheet, so if there is anyone else who would like to speak regarding this item, please indicate you'd like to come up.
I'm Pam Tadbury, I live a block and a half from here. So I actually oddly can look at density, intensity, location, scale and design, parking and circulation, common open space, environmental protection and phases and think that only phases are accomplished by this plan. They've given themselves phased development, and the first thing I'm going to say to you is please notice, Planning Commission, that our zoning code and ULUC do not give us phases. And the most important change that I want you to make in the ULUC next revision is phased steps. We should never have zoned the whole city all at once everywhere. We should have said four fifteen-year sections with maybe twenty-five percent of a portion of each corridor at a time. So let's give ourselves phased development in the future, at least. We certainly give developers that. So I appreciate the work that staff has done. With public notice, I know it's hard, and I really appreciate that extra postcards were sent. More people heard about this than the minimum. At the same time, for this location and this intensity of development, it's nowhere near enough. So many people are on mineral are going to be impacted by the total development on mineral and definitely by the repurposing of this site. And so second, I want to point out the disadvantage of Littleton of losing the jobs that were intended to benefit the city by this previous zoning. Light manufacturing and office, these were highly-paid jobs. They were local. And you know, there's this mantra, live, work, play? Over and over, what we see is replacement of jobs, good jobs, that our previous code intended for the city to have, being destroyed, being made inaccessible to that use forever because they're being replaced by this kind of multifamily residential that you see everywhere up and down the front range. It is not unique. It is not Littleton. It's not special. We're not getting anything from this. The developers are. They're in and out pretty much, the investors, within eight to ten years. So they're going to get what they need, and then if markets change, we're stuck with the results for seventy years. This is not a good deal for us. I don't think it's overparked. The parking spaces are smaller. Planning Commission approved that a while ago. It's not a good idea to cram people into parking spaces that are so small. We need to understand the impact on mineral as a whole. It's appalling that five percent of this sixteen units or nineteen, whatever it is, are considered enough affordable housing. It's not. We have the lowest amount of the eleven cities who have IHOs, and that's intolerable, et cetera, et cetera. Thanks very much.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak regarding this item? Seeing none. We'll close the public comment portion of the public hearing here at eight twenty-five And allow time for Planning Commission members to ask questions of applicant, the applicant team and staff, and also for them to respond to issues that were raised during the public comment portion. Start now. Any questions?
This time I do. Thank you for the presentations, everyone. Probably both of these questions are going to be for the applicant, but first, talking about the affordable units, I do see that it's nineteen units. What is the AMI on those units? Proposed AMI?
It's sixty percent AMI.
Thank you. And then on the circulation plan and on a couple of the other exhibits here, you're showing one of your points of egress and ingresses through the commercial lot. Is that going to be a reciprocal access easement, some sort of other agreement in place on that, or? Go ahead. Sorry.
Yeah, it's an agreement between us and Grant Nelson and his team.
Okay. And that'll be recorded easement?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I've got.
Okay. Commissioner Rudulovich, any questions?
Sure. For the developer, you mentioned you worked with Vibrant Littleton on multiple occasions. Did you have a chance to talk to our own transportation mobility board that Littleton has?
We went through the process. Thank you very much for the question. We went through the process with the city in great detail, talked about that plan as well and looked at all those elements. I think we really focused on trying to put those documents, those into the MDP, right? The eight-foot connection there on our site, adding the east-west connection. So we did sort of through the city itself, they facilitated a couple of discussions.
With the transportation boards? Excellent. Can you give me a guess as to what the, let's just say, going market rate for your one, two and three-bedroom units would be? That are not the affordable units.
Yeah, I'll have Jimmy address that, sure.
Yeah, we've got a mixture of one, two and three-bedroom units. Those rates will probably range in the seventeen, eight-hundred dollars per square foot for the smaller units, and then up to probably twenty-five, twenty-six hundred square, twenty-five to twenty-six hundred dollars for the larger units. And then some of the larger units, I mean, the way these buildings are designed, they actually have a garage attached. So if you pull into your own garage, you walk into your unit, it's an elevated kind of apartment design.
Okay. In the tree report, there were forty-five trees on this property that were listed in good or fair condition, and it looks like you're trying to save eighteen of them, which is forty percent. It might be just that they, they're in spots where, that are going to not be conducive to save things of that nature. Do you know, are most of these in the good fare? Are they, I'd like an answer to that question, if you got it?
Absolutely. Of course. We're just going to gather, yeah.
I think our best chance to save some of the existing trees will be at the northeast corner where the park zone is, and then in the southeast corner around the clubhouse. I can look at the report and get a feel for what the condition is, but from my recollection, most of the nice mature trees were in that eastern end of the site.
Yeah, it gives you instant trees too, that you don't have to plant. There was a lot of talk about the fence along the south end of this property. From the designs here, it looks like it's going to be, your plan is to have a natural barrier there. What would happen to the chain link fence that currently exists? Is that around your property? Is it South Park's?
We love razor wire, so we were going to try and, I'm just joking. Yeah, so we thought, again, a little bit of a miscommunication, we thought we would kind of over-landscape that using the standards of the city and leave it more kind of an open feel. But what we're hearing is that's not what's wanted. We're happy to look into a fence to go along there. I know that changes the landscape requirement along that southern side. I think our biggest concern is just maintaining our schedule with the MDP and working with staff. And so that's a pretty easy change for us to make from the design standard. It would just be working with staff to make sure that we can kind of get that.
And for staff, is that a feasible thing? Will it fit the MDP? Will it fit the zoning district, things of that nature?
Absolutely. So what the applicant is referencing is our buffer yard standards. So you get the choice when you, when you look at the buffer yard standards, you can either put in a fence and landscaping, which is typically a narrower version. In this case, that would be a ten-foot buffer yard, or you can do fifteen-foot natural buffer yard. So they had selected the ten-foot, or the fifteen-foot natural buffer yard. But to add the fence does not impact the buffer yard either way because that natural barrier is still there.
Okay. I don't know if that's something we may want to talk about, but I, and I know fencing that completely off may not be totally, what I'm thinking of is you have potential customers also here for your businesses to the south there. I know there's, my veterinarians in that area, there's a lot of businesses in there that would, that may benefit from at least an access point in there. I don't know. Because I'm guessing that the sidewalk infrastructure is going to end at this property. It's not going to extend south, correct?
That's correct, yes, sir.
On South Park Terrace?
That's right, yeah.
Okay. So that, basically, somebody's going to have to walk around the entire property in order to get to those businesses. So I, that might be a discussion for you guys to have, but that's just an observation.
Sure.
When it comes to traffic stuff, the, there were several improvements that weren't mentioned on the presentation that you all had, like Mineral and Broadway, County Line Broadway, places like that. Are those also ones that would be, I guess, paid for and used by the applicant? Or is that, since they're a little further away, you start getting more complex, I understand?
They're still required to be paid for by the developer. The sort of nuance to this is all those recommendations are combined within the full study that includes retail. The current traffic study in its current state doesn't necessarily separate, you know, is this retail's responsibility? Is this the multifamily's responsibility? We've had talks and markups offline to begin determining that. A lot of the multifamily responsibility is very minor, but yes, every single one will be accounted for.
So even the one that's eliminate a median shift lanes on, things of that nature, that's not cheap stuff, I know, so.
Yeah, yeah, correct. Correct. They're responsible for those improvements.
Okay. When it goes to the study that was done, is the study at Mineral Broadway, is that concluded yet, or is it still ongoing?
At Mineral and Broadway, the corridor study?
Not the corridor. I think there was an intersection, specific to that intersection.
Oh, yeah. It's, I mean, the traffic study isn't fully approved, but it's very close. There are recommendations there that Kimley Horn has provided. That one is another interesting one, since we do have an overlapping city project forthcoming. It hasn't started design. It's going to start later in the year. So we have Kimley Horn's essentially capacity recommendations. For that specific intersection, they'll be providing a fee in lieu that essentially accounts for what their, the construction costs of what their recommendations would be, and then we'll be able to use that money incorporated into our safety project design.
Okay. And the fiber on Broadway, how close is that? Is that still in study, study form? Is that, I'm guessing it's probably grant-funded too, correct?
That is, that's by, that's grant-funding as well, at least the phase one that just was constructed, phase two. I have it down design this year and build next year. So that'll include additional, it's fiber from Broadway and Mineral down to four seventy and then along.
Could you explain the advantage of that?
It's to interconnect our signals. It's so we can monitor them from off-site so we can coordinate our monitor them from off-site, so we can coordinate our signals. We can use more smart traffic infrastructure.
And just to be clear, we already, I, I did look up the, the definition of height. And I think it's like section twelve, ten sub twelve. And it does say, when, when there's a gabled roof, you are to use the average. I think that's something that probably needs to be made clear on our, on our, on our tables, that that's what's being used. I mean, I, personally, I would rather they have the pitched roofs anyway. I, I personally hate the, the cutoffs. There's nothing, if it's, if you're allowed to do it, you're allowed to do it. But to give up a couple extra feet to get an actual peaked roof that kind of fits the rest of the area is a good thing. All right, I think that's, uh, that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, thanks for your presentations. I, I, I wanna, I wanna make a note that I'm actually just, I'm really impressed with your, with your landscaping plan. As a gardener and a beekeeper, I really appreciate the, and a Colorado native, the attention to the drought-resistant and native plants that are planned for this area, so. One of the things that I think was mentioned here in the public comment too is, is a question that I had is when I'm going through, when, when we're going through both the city's presentation and the, and the developer's presentation, in what we're seeing in terms of the road layout regarding the neighborhood connectors. We, we see words about how there's gonna be protected bike lanes, and then we see graphics that have nothing in the way of bicycle infrastructure, just pedestrian and vehicle infrastructure. So I, I feel like we're kind of being told one thing and shown another. And I want to know that we are actually adhering to the, the bicycle infrastructure that we've set forth in our transportation master plan. This development, I think, is in a great location to take advantage of that last mile commute to the train station, and then once the Broadway corridor, the Broadway corridor redevelopment that's planned down the road for the enhanced bus rapid transit, to say nothing of all of the other trails and, and businesses that'll be within, you know, within a mile, that might be a little too far for, for a walk, but, but easily covered on scooters or bikes. So, so what's the, what's the real plan here regarding bicycle infrastructure on the surrounding roads?
So if I can, to start to keep it to the frontage of this site, the multifamily site with it, which is just along South Park Terrace. So the difficulty of having someone come in and put, say, a bike lane on only of their frontage is, it's, it's segmented and not complete, and it can be confusing to go on and off that quickly. So what we do with, say, the, the right-of-way dedication and that eight-foot sidewalk dedication where it is, it gives us space for the city to do a full corridor bike project. For something like South Park Terrace, there's existing enough pavement width to stripe in bike lanes, albeit not buffered. Along Mineral Avenue, there is room to stripe in buffered bike lanes. And then what you'll see, and this is getting off topic for us tonight, but it's, it'll be part of the retail, because that's their frontage up along Mineral Avenue. They're planning on redoing the right-turn lanes and re-striping to allow that separated bike and right-turn facilities, and then that can accommodate buffered bike lanes as well.
Okay, so once we get that right-of-way associated with the commercial frontage, is, is you're saying, is that's, that's, it's basically necessary to get those right-of-ways designated before we can, before we can at least illustrate those on the, on the neighborhood quarters? Okay, that, that, that makes sense. I just, you know, again, like I said, I, I feel like we're in a really unique location and, and there's, there's definite, definite opportunities to capitalize on some of this last mile commute to, to take people away, or, you know, to give people alternatives to, to taking their car all the time. Related to that, what kind of, you know, I, I, I hear that, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna develop the, the pedestrian and the bike access through this commercial development, right? What, what kind of, especially given that second access that comes back through the, the commercial set point, what kind of legal framework or guarantee do we have that those commercial developments aren't just gonna back out and, and treat pedestrians and bicycles as an afterthought?
Yeah, I appreciate it, and thanks for your comments earlier. I, I will say that we have tried to go out of our way to, in front of this body, talk about it publicly. We have brought up our ongoing meetings with Vibrant Littleton to talk about the things we're discussing. That ten-foot connection that goes a multi-use trail that's consolidated, that consolidation was exactly for this point, to have bicycle opportunities, cyclist opportunities to come into this site. We think, and then the twenty-foot, twenty-one-foot right-of-way on South Park Terrace and the eight-foot trail. We think we are the anchor that pulls pedestrian connections into this site and out to Mineral. It is a tremendous opportunity to add to the existing framework. We want our residents to be able to take advantage of these facilities as well. So we're talking about them. We're showing cross-sections of that. We have shown that consolidated that view just north of our site, where it will be ten feet on a lottie that goes to Mineral, and then will connect to that bike state, the bike lane there. So we're trying to do that. I think we're being very open about continuing that dialogue. We will continue to engage with Vibrant Littleton and other organizations as we move through that process.
But the, the commercial development, as I understand, is owned separately than the residential development?
It's part of the overall Team Republic. Republic is here as well, and that's why we showed that cross-section. We were one team that are closing on this, so we know that. That's why I noted in particular that they have to go through a different process. They don't have an M.D.P. They go through a different process on the commercial site plan specific. They go through on each platted lot. So referencing again the process, but we are showing infrastructure, right? We show some of the conceptual, we talk about a pedestrian gathering area in the northeastern quadrant of that site. I will note that Vibrant Littleton and others have really said most of that interest is in the commercial space, right? Where those connection, pedestrian connection sites are, where I go with my family, how I go there. So we'll continue to engage with them as we move forward in this process.
Okay. I don't know, sorry, this, something other came up in the comments. I don't know what all the other conditions are in the South Park Owners, South Park Owners Association letter of support. Besides the fencing, I've heard that one. I, I do want to say that I, I would second a pedestrian access point that goes to businesses to the south. I, I don't live very far from this proposed development. I've, you know, I've, I've been to a funeral service at that church. I've been over to the ice arena and hung out in the bar while my friends' kids played. And my bet is, yeah, I go to, I probably go to the same bet, right? And it's right over there. So, and a lot of times I will, I'll come down either on the Highline Canal and I'll cut over. So I, I don't know if there's something that can be worked to South Park Owners Association that will meet their needs as far as limiting trespassers, but still allowing residential access, residence access through there?
It would be, and I appreciate, the discussion has been so good about the buffer yard. We chose that fifteen-foot buffer yard. That was kind of our understanding about a more appropriate buffer. We would love and will work with South Park Business on that. We think there does need to be some limited pedestrian connections. Frankly, we hope we have people that live there that work in those businesses, right? We think that's a very important part of this site, so it needs to have some natural connection. We're more than willing, as Jillie said, Jill, excuse me, as Jimmy said, to have fencing as part of that as well. It would be our preference if we're asked to not have, is it a condition? Because that seems to lay out like that's the only way. We'd rather have, be able to work with them, talk about those pedestrian connections, and look at having a true community. But again, they are terrific. We've had a great relationship with them, and we will, moving forward in this process as well.
My only other question, and I, maybe this is, this is more traffic, kind of traffic related. We did see that peak traffic travel times go down. Overall, trips go up. So do we assess the cost of additional wear and tear on roads through trips in traffic studies for developments?
So we do have transportation impact fees, and they're, they're dependent on the use. And then depending on the use, it's whether it's square footage or like rooms. So the multifamily, it's per dwelling unit. So essentially, we do assess a, a fee, but it's not within the traffic impact study. It's standardized through our code, I believe, and fees are assessed based on that.
Okay. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, just following up on that with Kyle, with respect to how those traffic impacts, the, the adverse impacts are, are addressed over a multi-phase project, right? So this traffic study is looking at several different projects that are happening along Mineral. And this is just one of them, and, you know, you can, they can build part of it, but there's gonna be impacts from this community on areas outside that. How, how is that addressed incrementally as the different phases come online?
So as the traffic study sits, the only, the only, well, I guess there's, there's three sort of phases that are pointed out. It's whether it's the multifamily, it's the Costco, or the rest of the retail. And that's something we're gonna have to go through as we work through the subdivision improvement agreement. So it'll be a legal document between the city and the developer. Tassi, you can tell me if I'm explaining that wrong. But it, there, there will, as it stands now, a maximum of three phases of public improvements. Ideally, it'll just be one. So everything that's identified where Costco is the majority, the majority, like contributor to that, that improvement or needed improvement, they need to install that, and needs to be inspected, and it needs to be approved by city public works staff prior to us giving C.O. Same thing for the multifamily development and so forth.
Okay, so say their development is completed next year for argument's sake, and, and Costco doesn't come online for ten years. What happens in the interim? Are there impacts that can't be mitigated, or you have impact fees, but you can't build it yet, or maybe that's?
Um, so I, so you're saying that Costco is built, but they can't use it because they haven't built the improvements?
Or say, say it's delayed for whatever reason. It doesn't come online right away, so there's a, just a time, there's a lag between the two.
There's a lag. So, um, it would be that, you know, that those improvements are associated with when that traffic is drawn. So it's when, when the site is built out is when there. I guess that specific use, so say Costco is built out, that's when the associated improvement is required to be in. Does that answer the question?
Well, I, I think so, and Jared, you might have something else to say. But what, what I'm thinking of is will the traffic, adverse traffic impacts of this particular development, three hundred and seventy units, be completed with this project?
Correct. Yes. Yeah. And, yeah.
Okay. All right, good. That, that answered. I, I do have some concerns about the porosity of the site with respect to both bicycle access. And I'm glad Ms. Mark Ketti pointed that out, that the circulation diagrams don't really address bicycle. They do address pedestrian traffic. So I'm, I'm interested in, there, there is a, a big issue in Littleton with bicycle access, and this is a good location for bicyclists, so I'm hoping that's gonna be incorporated. And also the porosity of the site to the south, and recognizing the South Park owners' concern about potential trespass, recognize that. But also the future potential for access between the sites need to be considered. I like the, the buffer yard requirements that we have in the U.L.U.C. that allow some flexibility there. I personally, as a landscape architect, appreciate the fact that a heavily landscaped, larger setback buffer is there. I, I think it will work, but it may, may not too, so I can understand both sides of that argument. And then one other question with respect, it came up regional, I think there were some concerns about the regional detention. Could you just review how that works, the stormwater detention retention on this site versus the others?
Yeah, I'm going to take my first attempt at it, and Kyle might have to help me out a little bit. But basically, this site was developed first, prior to a lot of the SPO development. So they had their detention largely taken care of on, on that site. And of course, there's always allowable, you know, discharge at a very, you know, minor level into that next site, next site, you know, per, per drainage law. But basically, this site, all the drainage would be captured in the joint detention on the, with the commercial site. So it'd be captured in, on the commercial site. So you, there would be conveyance that would get it to detention on the commercial site. So there's a, there is a lot of coordination, you know. We are, you know, hyper-focused on the Embry site, and that's the way it needs to, to stay this evening. But at the same time, I did want to, to make reference to that northern site regarding detention. And then we've also been working, you know, in very close coordination regarding pedestrian bike amenities to get to Mineral. So that north-south corridor through the site that connects into the Embry location is required. So that's the, the item I was going to mention when you were talking about phasing and how's that work? Well, regardless for fire access, et cetera, they have to have those two points of ingress and egress. So that north-south seam road, extension of a lottie, whatever we want to call it, it's gonna be private, but has to go in, absolutely. And that is where we've been working with the applicant on that ten-foot path that will provide a lot of bike amenity separated to get you to Mineral.
So for that and for the detention, there'd have to be a formal legal agreement between the two separate properties?
A hundred percent. I know we've taken a lot of that into consideration in our plating conversations. So we did do the preliminary plats. The final plat's gonna touch up a couple of those items and, and get it completed.
Okay. And the last quick question I have is the inclusionary housing. I know there's nineteen units. There's sixty percent A.M.I. Where are they located on the site?
They're located, I'll confirm with Jimmy, but just throughout the building. So we'll just operate them as nineteen units. We go throughout that, and we go in a rotation as they become available. So we'll just operate them as any other unit.
So they're not all in one part of the development?
That is correct, sir. Yes, sir.
That's detailed through the I.H.O. as well.
Okay.
That language.
All right. Thank you.
And I just wanted to acknowledge, I apologize, the questions about the bicycle infrastructure and not detailing that. We, we should have probably done that better. It was off-site in some ways, that north-south road there on a lottie. So we were hesitant to put that, but that's why we're talking about that ten-foot designation. That is required. That'll be shown in all of those, in those future applications. So frankly, my apology, I should have made that a little more clear and on our illustrations. But those two points of access, we think that primarily has been led with Vibrant Littleton to have that ten-foot multi-use trail.
I think you mentioned that there's ample bicycle parking facilities.
Absolutely. And again, I think that's a pretty good anchor for us, right? We want those amenities, and we have, we want to serve that as well. We think we want to, you know, that's a great thing for our community as well.
Okay. I may be redundant on a question or two, but I'll try not to be. Okay, would it be difficult for you to pull up your presentation by chance?
I will be great at it, because Jared's doing it, so.
Okay, so page eleven.
Sure.
That's a question, just a question about some of the traffic count numbers there. Okay, so it says.
Curtis?
On that page, under the second bullet, the last dash, five hundred and twenty daily trips, traffic volume added. So I think this is what another commissioner was talking about. But could you just explain the traffic impacts briefly based on this slide?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Great question. So the first shows a hundred and fifty-six fewer trips during the morning peak hour. So that's the highest hour likely between seven and nine A.M. So generally, it's around seven-thirty to eight-thirty. There's a hundred and two fewer trips in the afternoon peak hour. That's the rush hour when everybody's returning home. But on an overall daily basis, the amount of traffic would be expected to increase compared to the previous user. And that's because residential, there's people that come and go throughout the day. Whereas in an office, you clock in, and then you're there all day. You might leave for lunch, but otherwise, you're pretty much captive all day, and then you leave and don't return again. So over a day, an entire day, we will see potentially an increase in traffic. But the peak hours are the, are the hours that have the highest traffic volume on the adjacent streets. And so that's what we study as traffic engineers. And so we're going to have a peak hour reduction, but a daily increase. One thing to note is this comparison was done based upon 400 units. Whereas we've heard tonight that the proposal is for 370. And so those differences aren't as extreme as those numbers. Actually, be the last.
Okay. Good. And on that same presentation, page 15. And I know you've just talked about ingress, egress quite a bit. But on, I was trying to see that western boundary over there. And there's only, there are only two points of access to the property, to the site, right? One is on terrace, Southbridge Terrace. The other is through the commercial. And it, is this what you were just talking about and you apologize for not showing that more clearly?
Yeah, exactly. I think it just shows, it's kind of the combination of issues you've heard. So the only points of access we have from public right away, Mineral and then South Park Terrace. It shows those two connections. Those are the roadway connections. The office building to the south of us that's talking about a fence there. So it kind of shows why we have to have those two. The city, Jared particularly noted that that northern connection there is required, right? Will be required and that 10-foot right away. So yes, I think we should have shown it. We did try to illustrate here how important we think that view corridor is, that connection of amenities there. If you look at four, looking and connecting up to that, we think that is a pedestrian connection, also a vehicular into the site as well. So that's why we've influenced kind of the, the transition of our site more in a pedestrian-friendly way at both of those access points.
Okay, so that, where that yellow arrow is, I think it's probably covering.
That is correct. Yeah, you're seeing it over the old site plan, I think is what's happening. And so you're seeing existing buildings and that looks a little confusing. That will be the Costco on the left of that, right? That's as it's proposed today. And so you're seeing it, then it would be Eladi that goes all the way up to Mineral.
Okay.
So that is correct, yes.
All right, so that being Eladi, I believe, as you said.
Yes.
So that, that's more like a roadway. You don't just enter into the parking lot. But there's going to be a road with some, it sounded like pedestrian slash.
Exactly.
Bicycle connection there. Okay.
And we show a cross-section of that later on where we showed really heavy landscaping against that commercial building as a buffer, right? Even for our own residential. And then consolidating that sidewalk for the use of bicycles to have that 10-foot multi-use trail. So all very purposeful on why we've designed that way to go north.
Okay, because I envisioned this, trying to drive out of this development through a commercial, you know, parking lot with all the chaos and, okay. So thank you for the clarification on that.
Sure.
I, I...
Yeah, you're right. And I'd say our primary access, we do believe, is South Park Terrace. That shows it a little better without the buildings. We think most of our traffic will go that way, but yes, it should be accommodated on that middle Eladi street. Or private road.
It, it shows it a little bit better, but it, it doesn't really show how Eladi's going to get to the actual site, at least as far as I can tell. Oh, it goes into the...
Yeah, it's a challenge of the different zone district and the different process, right? So we're just in this MDP on our site-specific.
So is there, I guess, okay, he's trying to clarify for me. So see the other, the signal light, I don't know what intersection that one is on the farthest west?
That's Mineral Place.
Mineral Place. Okay, so there's, there is no ingress, egress from Mineral Place. It's all from Eladi and from Terrace, Southbridge Terrace, right?
Correct, not to our site, but it will access the commercial.
All right, okay. Okay. Oh, is there a reason why you decided to provide more parking than is required? I mean, I heard the comment from our citizen about the site, the spaces being very small.
Sure.
And sometime, you know, in, in the planning that we've been doing, we've discouraged there being more parking than needed. And with all the commercial surrounding that, it would seem that there would be ample parking. Just wondering what your reasoning is for that?
Sure. The project is, isn't designed to share parking with the retail. But, you know, what we've found in Colorado and most of the markets we work in, people have an extra car sometimes. And so, you know, there's a lot of folks that have a Jeep for the weekend or some type of weekend vehicle or a separate car. And so we, we're pretty dialed into our parking ratio. And a lot of times we'll hire a third-party consultant to just verify. So it's not uncommon for us to have slightly more parking than what the city requires. Sometimes in other cities, if they have a really low ratio, we'll have more, you know, a little bit more than they expect. But it's just one of the things we don't want to battle because you really can't make up more parking once you're built. And so we're, this will be our, gosh, I think it's like our 28th project here in Colorado. And all the projects that I mentioned that were in Littleton are kind of this product type and have a very similar parking ratio. And so the combination of the detached garages along with the attached garages. So we have garages that are attached in the building. You can see that in the architecture. As well as the surface parking is, it gives a nice complement of different parking for folks. So they can pay up a little bit more if they want to have covered garage. They can have a, a car stall that's covered. It's just open to the weather when it comes to like a parking, covered parking area. So we try and offer different types of parking. But at the end of the day, the ratio is something we're pretty dialed into. And, and we feel comfortable with the ratio where it's, it's not too much, but it's definitely going to be a, a place where people can find a spot and, and walk reasonably distance to their, to their apartment.
Okay. To clarify too, on the, on the detached garages, I'm guessing those are the little rectangles?
Correct.
Bottom left?
Yeah. The previous site plan probably would blow it up a little bit more. But that's correct. Yeah, the smaller buildings are, are the garages. Yeah, right there. And then the ones that say C1 through C6, those are a two-story garage, basically. There's units above, there's six garage stalls and then three direct access units above those. Those are our most popular units because you don't have anybody living above you or below you. But...
And they have two garages?
They just have one. They park in one and then they walk up. And I guess if they wanted to rent the one next to them, they could, but there would be no connectivity. They'd have to park and walk out.
Oh, okay. All right. All right. Also, on, with all the existing buildings and infrastructure there, hardscaping, would you then demo all that before these apartments are started or how do you anticipate that happen?
Yeah, the, the plan is, is we really need that building completely gone. You can't really see it right there, but it interferes a little bit. Not necessarily the building, but just the infrastructure around it. But the plan is, is to demo the entire thing and that'll be, Grant and his, his team will be doing that.
Okay. I think that's all I've got. Thank you.
All right. So we, we did hear some concerns about sort of the, you know, loss of jobs, housing mix and hopeful that economic development staff can kind of talk to, you know, the overall benefits to the community of the proposed project and, you know, maybe some additional commentary on, you know, kind of the, the market for, you know, office jobs in Littleton.
Sure, yeah. No, we had some interesting conversations with other developers that were potentially looking at the site when it hit the market a year, year and a half ago, two years ago. And so, you know, I think what, what ended up here tonight is really kind of the ideal solution for, for the city between the, you know, being a horizontal mixed-use development. So we're a huge proponent of the housing in this location. You know, we have other projects in the vicinity too that I think I referenced in the, the staff report. So, you know, including the, the hospital development expansion and just the additional commercial that's going to be added to this area. So housing's a really critical need here. And so we're, yeah, again, we're a huge proponent of what we're seeing here with this type of product, including some inclusionary housing units as well.
Thank you. And this one is probably a little more technical on the photometric plan. The, the wall pack lighting attached to the buildings, are those full cutoff light fixtures? Generally, when I see the word wall pack, I'm thinking of something that's spraying light out at a 45-degree angle and that is not exactly dark sky friendly.
I will turn maybe to our land planner or architect to address that question. So I'll answer maybe from here that, and Jared, maybe you could do much better. But it's not fully selected yet. I think it was our response that we're going through that. So I think we hear your comments that that is needed to be dark sky. Is that correct? Or we'll work through that with staff?
Or to be more precise, IES, full cutoff light fixtures. Illuminating Engineering Society, for those who are not familiar with the acronym.
May I, sure? I, I did take a closer look at that wall pack line fixture. The light itself is kind of up within it. However, there is a panel below it that reflects out. So that is something that we want to take a closer look at and finalize that detail. So I appreciate you bringing that up.
So this is probably for, for staff on Mineral and maybe not necessarily related exactly to this project. But, you know, talked about the bike lanes on Mineral. Would those be buffered or protected?
And... Buffered for now.
Okay.
So the developer's responsibility with retail will be to provide buffered. And then we're, as city staff, looking to provide protected infrastructure as we move forward. It's another one of those segmented corridor issues.
And the, the South Park Terrace corridor, the, I think that might have been one of the other things that Vibrant Littleton was alluding to, is that that's an eight-foot shared path along there?
It is. And that's, that's consistent with the, the TNP cross-sections. So as far as bike lane, future planning for that go, South Park Terrace is due for, for road and asphalt maintenance for a mill and overlay within the next couple of years. And we're looking at adding specific designated bike lanes along South Park Terrace.
Yeah, and as both a pedestrian and a cyclist, I'll say eight feet is absolutely not enough room for a shared path. It's dangerous. Curious about pedestrian connections. I noticed there's just that one north-south pedestrian connection out of the site. Did the design team look at a connection on the western portion of the site to connect to kind of the western part of the retail that may be planned? And continuing with connections, I'm also not seeing any sidewalks near the carriage houses and looking at the ADA pathway from building 11 on the site plan, building 1 at the northwest corner there on the exhibit on the screens. You have to travel south to do the ADA route and then travel circuitously through the site to get to that north-south connection to the retail. Is there an opportunity for more direct ADA routes, both from the carriage houses and say from building 1 on the, the exhibit on the screen?
Great.
The, and I, I may be speaking out of turn, so Kepart can correct me. But I don't think the ADA applies to the carriage units because the units are on the second floor. And there's no...
Yeah, so it's... And it's less so ADA there that there's absolutely no sidewalk anywhere near the carriage units. You pretty much walk out the garage and have to play in traffic to get to the north-south connection to the commercial.
Okay. And then your other question was building 1 with the, yeah, with the sidewalk. We can look into that. I mean, we're, we're limited with space on the north side of those buildings. And, you know, look, to be frank, I mean, there are areas in these, in these parking lots that you have to be aware when you're walking or, or traversing. We do our best. And you can kind of see, we do have a good east-west and quite a few north-south connections when it comes to sidewalks within the community. But, you know, we can, we can go back and take a look at ways to maybe connect those buildings, one, and then those carriage units on the north side to better enhance the pedestrian experience.
Yeah, and certainly even a five-foot sidewalk would be a vast improvement along the north property line. And should you be installing a fence to buffer yard, you gain five feet on the south.
True, yeah.
What about a connection on the western part of the property over there by building 1 to the western part of the commercial?
You know, I was actually talking to Grant about that earlier. Because we haven't, I, I know Costco is moving forward with their design. For the most part, that, that back area is where the, the loading docks, I believe, are, you know. So again, it was brought up earlier by someone here on the commission. But, you know, a, a lot of our buildings are designed to try and shield ourselves, the project and noise away from the back-loading docks of the proposed retail. So honestly, I think the best place to be would be the north, you know, corridor that we created kind of in the middle of the site. What's the name of the street?
Eladi.
Eladi, I was going to say Islip. Eladi, that's probably the best way to get to the retail. Now, when you go up, you can go east or west when you get to the, the next intersection. But to kind of serpentine back through the loading docks, there's just, I mean, I could go up here and say, we'll take a look, but I don't really know if there's much to take a look at. It's just going to be a ugly part of the building that we're, we ourselves are trying to shield our project from.
Hello, commissioners. My name's Jeff Nyleb. I'm a land planner with Kepart. And we've been working with Jared on the site plan. And one of the things to note, there was a question about building 1 and whether there isn't a more direct access route to the clubhouse. And one of the reasons for that is that the open space buffer, that 15 feet, we're actually not allowed to have a sidewalk. Correct me if I'm wrong?
It could go north-south, but it wouldn't be able to traverse through the entire buffer.
Right, so it can't go east-west through there. And that would be the same for the, the carriage buildings to the north. But definitely open to looking at other options to help provide that connectivity.
And as far as the, the site design on this, the eastern portion of the commercial near the carriage houses, is that planned as loading docks? I did see one of the illustrative drawings had an arrow just north of the apartments. So is that a driveway or...
We almost had Grant not speak the entire time.
Good evening, members of the Plan Commission. My name's Grant and also with Public Investment Group. We don't have a user yet north of the carriage buildings. So, but we're happy to, Jimmy and I have worked together for a number of years and we're happy to create connectivity and make sure that this flows right. I mean, we really are trying to create a vertical, you know, mixed-use project here, so we want it to be interactive. Your one question on lot 1 or the building 1, the property to the west is not part of what we are acquiring. It's owned by another user who parks a lot of cars out there. So I, I, we've contacted them and we're trying to be in contact with them. But I don't think they want us connecting with them. So, and any other questions, I'm happy to answer. Thank you.
And then I think the, the last one was just generally, you know, with the traffic study, you know, and a lot of the intersections were, you know, in the future development at a lower level of service than we're seeing today. But just wanting to confirm in staff's analysis of the traffic impact study that, you know, the, the network and the intersections with the improvements required with the development can accommodate the, the proposed traffic?
Correct.
Great. All right. Were there any other additional questions?
Yeah, I learned my lesson on the first one to ask all my questions. Even when they come up later. For the applicant, the, the maximum that you could do here is 48 units per acre. Is there any way you could hit that number on this property? Given the other restrictions, I, this is, this is for a future policy question. I just want to know what the number actually is that you could hit here, maximum, if you wanted to.
I mean, and there's a height limitation, right, of the 40 feet? And you, you pointed out the, the pitch roof. I mean, from a, you, you could probably do some type of structured parking. You know, obviously, you could do a structured parking deal that would allow for, for more units. I think that folks in our neighborhood meetings would have not liked that with the traffic count would have gone up. Look, it's, so the answer is yes. You can always probably do more density. It just requires more structured parking or lower rate. a lower ratio than some developers would be comfortable with forcing traffic to park somewhere, you know? I don't know where. But this feels like the right product in the right environment. You know, we're really, for us, that was when we looked at it, like, this is kind of the perfect spot for this type of product. It's a low impact, but it's a higher density. But, yeah, there are ways to hit higher densities. I don't know if we'd get up to forty-eight, but if you asked me to, we'd give it a good try. But, yeah, it would require some additional structured parking.
Okay. Thank you. And can you go back to the one slide with the traffic that says the minus one oh two and all that?
I think it was slide eleven, if I remember correctly. Sure.
So, with this, it's comparing the office use to the multifamily use. What happens when you add the retail use as well? Is that factored in here?
So, this is specific to the residential site only, and so this is a comparison of that property. So, when you compare the entire project, we did that as well as part of the other project. The traffic volumes are actually very similar in a peak hour sense, but in the daily, there's more traffic because the retail generates traffic throughout the entire day, again, as offices just morning in, afternoon out.
So, in summation, for the most part, it's going to be a wash once everything is built out here?
In the peak hour sense, yes. Very much a wash, yes.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Lastly, Republic National Distributing is basically your neighbor across the way there, and they, they're the truck route that I'm guessing everyone was talking about. Is South Park Terrace along their established truck route, or do they go a different direction? Because having semis pull through here with bicycles is probably not a super great idea.
South Park Terrace is the preferred means of...
Can I defer?
I take it you work there?
I'm with South Park, as you remember. So, Republic National uses South Park Terrace, and they come off of County Line Road with their over-the-road trucks. Most people don't see them because they stack at night. They do all of their over-the-road delivery at nighttime.
I used to work there.
Okay, so, yeah. And then, and then they're out of there in the morning, and then they have their box vans that go leave in the morning and come back in the afternoon. So, they're open.
But mainly, they're using South Park Terrace to go south out of here to go to County Line, then, correct? Not to go to Mineral?
South and north. They come off of the roads.
Minerals is no, it's got a twelve-thousand-pound limit.
So, they can't put, they can put the box trucks on there, though, but they, so they can't put the fully loaded tractor-trailers?
That's my understanding of that weight limit.
Even the box trucks, I understand, they don't run on minerals. So, they come out of Republic National and go south on Terrace.
Okay. Yes, so that, I'm just concerned with putting semis with bikes on the same road. That's the concern there. And since this is north of that intersection where the, because it's in, it's over off of the other south, whatever South Park that is, it's to the south there.
It's South Park Drive.
Yes.
And the driveways you'd have to see. So, Republic National is one of our business members, if you will, within Despo. And it's their request, which is why we put that in our letter to Littleton staff, that they're concerned to how to make that work relative to their truck traffic and the close proximity to these entrances and to make sure staff has sorted through that with the applicant.
It's, most of the truck traffic is coming out of the other end of that building, though, it seems like.
Comes out of the west side.
Comes out of the...
Comes out of the west side, southwest.
Southwest corner of the building?
Southwest corner of Republic National, yes, sir.
Yeah, and most of them are coming out and going south on South Park Terrace to hit County Line, to go where they're going.
They go south or they go east on South Park Drive, I guess it is.
To go around it, to wherever they're going.
Correct, they go south over, or west over, sorry, east to Broadway and then south to get back on C-470.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Sorry, I have one additional question for you regarding your bicycle parking. So, I know you said you've got a bike garage, and there's a bunch of surface parking, and I just want to know if, one of the things, I think it said it was vertical bike parking, which sounds great and accommodates a lot of bikes until you're trying to park a sixty-pound e-bike and plug it in, in which case, vertical charging is kind of not useful. The fact of the matter is, if I could pick it up and hang it on the wall, I'm probably just going to pick it up and carry it to my apartment. So, given that, you know, numerous studies show that people who ride cargo bikes are often likely to do the more and even replace a car, they're easily to replace a car with that, to what extent do your bike parking, both indoor and outdoor, accommodate cargo bicycles and electric cargo bikes or e-bikes?
Great questions, and I just got the answer from the architect. So, in that garage space, there are the, and you've seen these probably, the one, the wall-hanging ones, but there's also some on the floor as well. So, for your heavier e-bikes or maybe something with saddlebags or something that's a little bit bulkier, you can use one of those as an option? Was there another question?
Well, just like length, size, cargo bikes width, like, so are you spacing, like, are you spacing and are you providing outlets, you know, that'll make this accessible for...
For charging?
Yeah, I mean, like I said, if I can pick it up and hang it on a wall, I'm probably just going to pick it up and carry it up to my apartment, right? Rather than store it in the bike garage.
I'm not sure of the availability for charging, but it's something, oh, we have, we have answers, something we can look into, for sure.
Hi, I'm Carter White, I'm with Kepart, I'm the architect. I think we can cut out the middle man or middle woman, as it were. So, there are going to be, I think we'll have two spaces out of the twenty-one that will be on the ground, and we can accommodate outlets in there for them to be charged. And I was walking up for the rest of the question, so if you can remind me.
Yeah, different, like, have you sized, have you sized your bicycle garage, your bike parking for cargo bikes? Which, you know, because depending on, like, I've seen it too, where, you know, I've gone into a bike garage, and if you want to park, you know, your, one, you want to park your e-bike, right? Like, that's, you can usually get that in a regular spot, but you need to be near the charger, right? If you've got a cargo bike that tends to be a much longer wheelbase, right, that's going to require sort of a different parking space and a different parking requirement and still probably an access to an outlet. So, I mean, twenty, like, you got twenty-one bike spots, but, you know, it sounds like maybe you got two of them that are available for e-bikes and maybe only one if it's actually a cargo e-bike?
Yeah, I'd say so. We haven't designed it specifically with that in mind, but there's space inside the room. I think we could accommodate any sort of bike that someone would want to get in there. You're able to roll it up just onto the side of the bike rack and then lock it.
We had to look up what a cargo bike was just now, so, something we can definitely look into and make sure that's accommodated.
Okay.
Yep, we're happy to accommodate it, yes.
I do know a couple of people who've gone that route and replaced a car with a cargo bike, even in suburban Colorado. Yeah, yeah, you can do it, right? But, you know, like I said, it also can, it definitely changes the layout of bicycle storage. And then, you know, e-bikes also kind of really close that kind of last-mile transportation issue, especially if you're coming from the mineral station up that hill to park your bike, right? It just, you know, so making sure that that's accessible and easy for people to, you know, to get to and, you know, you're not trying to hang a sixty-pound e-bike on the wall either, right?
Terrific. We will incorporate that. My pedago is kind of what we look for on those as we look at Embry. So, we will look at that and be sure that we can accommodate that, for sure. All right. So, there being no further questions, I will call for a motion and a second on this item.
I'll go ahead and move to approve Littleton Planning Commission Resolution 03-2024, which approves of Embry Mineral Detailed Master Development Plan, MDP, for a portion of 700 West Mineral Avenue for multifamily residential development.
Second.
Motion by Coronado, second by Alman, and we'll start with discussion.
I, I think I've talked enough, I'm good.
Not too much, I feel like I've probably talked enough too. I just want to make sure, I would say that ask the developer to revisit with the South Park Owners Association, both potentially for, you know, pedestrian access to the south and then also to make sure their concerns are assuaged regarding, you know, any trespassing in the security of those buildings as well. And then also, just, I'd like to see, I guess, regarding the truck transport on South Park Terrace and the future planned bike, on-street bicycle facilities. I think that, I know neighborhood connectors say on-street bike facilities, they don't necessarily dictate buffered or protected bicycle lanes, but it may be worth trying to evaluate a safer infrastructure in terms of protected bicycle lanes, especially if we know, in areas where we know, we want to accommodate the industries and the companies that are already there, as well as make our future residents and people coming over there feel safe. So, I think that, I'd like, you know, if the city can give that, you know, as far as, you know, when we're taking into account these new right-of-ways and to plan for that. I think that'd be a really smart move, so, but that is it.
You know, I think I'm going to float a condition here based on South Park community concerns about the south edge of the site. And, you know, just to get into this, I'd make a motion that we add a condition that an impermeable buffer be included along the south edge of the property, except as negotiated with South Park Owners Association for limited pedestrian access.
I will second that. So, we have a proposed amendment, and by impermeable, I think we mean fence.
So, I think that allows some flexibility, whether it be a fence or really enhanced landscape, but that it be acceptable to the South Park folks.
Chair, if I may, can you repeat your amendment?
Okay. I was hoping you wouldn't ask that. Condition that an impermeable buffer be included along the south boundary for the length of the site, except as negotiated with the South Park Owners Association, with the potential for limited pedestrian connections. I don't know if I said that exactly the same, but close enough. And is your second?
Yes, the second remains in place, and do you feel you have some discussion on that proposed amendment? I guess I supported it based on the conversations that, you know, the testimony received requesting it and the applicant being open to the idea and staff indicating that it's not a problem to adjust that buffer yard.
I'd just like Jared to make sure that what that amendment says comports with something in the development code, to make sure that we're not mixing definitions on any of this stuff.
Absolutely. An applicant would be allowed to install a fence along their property line. In this case, you know, they chose, they had the option, you always have the option to install a fence on your property line, but they chose the option of the greater buffer rather than the narrower buffer with the fence. You can absolutely do both.
Okay. And then as far as like the actual word, non-permeable, impermissible, whatever, I forget exactly what it was, but as far as that specific language when we're putting this condition on there, I just want to make sure that it comports with a definition that we might already have in the development code.
Impermeable is kind of an interesting one when it comes to barriers. I understand what it means. I may ask the attorney to see if she has any opinions, but I would prefer just the term fence because it is in the definitions, but that's my personal opinion on it.
I guess the reason I didn't say fence is because I could perceive that landscaping could also be an impermeable buffer if designed properly. So, that's, so giving them some flexibility and option.
I appreciate the clarification.
Not necessarily a fence.
Thank you.
Additional comments on this particular amendment proposal?
I just kind of wonder if they would be able to work this out themselves. I don't, the fact that it came to the point where they mentioned it here, maybe not, but I don't know. It seems like they're amenable to working with each other, and so I don't know if a condition is necess, I don't know. So, yeah.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Clearly, they, you know, were amenable to working with each other. I've often sat at the staff table and appreciate having absolute clarity of direction from the, you know, decision-making or recommending body, so I'd be inclined to vote in favor of this, but understand if it's a little like gilding the lily. Okay, with that, I'll open up the voting on the proposed amendment to require an impermeable barrier, whether that's a fence or not, on the south property line in coordination with the South Park owners. Votes should be open.
The vote is five in favor with Member Radulovich voting no. The motion carries.
Thank you. I guess in the...
I'll continue with comment on the main motion. I really like the plan that's been presented. I think it's a vast improvement over the one we saw with the conceptual MDP, and I appreciate the applicants and staffs working with stakeholders and with neighbors and with the relatively new inclusionary housing ordinance to deliver something that I think meets the criteria generally. With respect to the decision criteria, just go back to this. The layout, I think, that east-west orientation, the buildings, very logical and efficient on the site. It fits well. It improves the connectivity with the adjacent roadways in a limited fashion as you only have limited frontage. The view lines have been considered, I think that was mentioned in there. I think the views are going to be important. As far as quality design, that's our second criteria. That's always a hard one. I just finished a book, in fact, where, you know, the whole premise of the book was that quality cannot really be defined, but everybody knows what it is when they see it, right? So, I generally think that there is quality here, and based on the developer's track record and the way they've located this on the site, I'm happy with what I see. I think the third criteria is zoning, district conformance. It's clear that it meets the requirements of a multifamily residential district, natural resources. I think this normally pertains to the drainage and grading in the site. I think the landscape plan is well done, and so I think it meets the natural resource criteria. And then the additional criteria for a detailed master development plan, I think that meets that as well. So, I can support this application.
In terms of criteria, I agree that it is, skip criteria, but back to the original, there are some very visible improvements in what we saw initially, which is, obviously tends to happen as you work on projects more and more. which is obviously tends to happen as you work on projects more and more. In terms of the criteria, the layout, I feel like it does meet that. I do appreciate that you went with the lower density and kind of maximized that, some of the natural landscaping that's already there and as well as adding more. Thank you for not maxing out that density. I think it makes for a much more visually attractive project. The, it seems within the project you have good pedestrian car access. We talked a lot about bicycle access being something that needs to be looked at, but I'll talk about that just a minute. The ingress and egress, I think, you know, we brought up that there's only two points of ingress/egress. That's, that's concerning for a project of this size. So hopefully you will be able to work out some other compromises around a lot or whatever to provide some more access, ingress/egress, whether it's just for pedestrians and/or bicycles without cars. But two seems minimal, two ingress points. Quality design, I think quality is in the eye of the beholder, as Chris was saying. But it looks like that you are meeting the intent of the, the plan and our guidelines, and they look attractive as far as I can tell, it's fine. Zoning conformance, I'm fine with that, too. My concerns were regarding the comments made about the bike lanes and some of, you know, ultimately, will this project conform with the zoning codes? I know that they will because you'll make them, right, Jared? You will assure that. But that attention is paid to some of those ordinances, or it's not an ordinance, but some of the features or guidelines that are, that we have in place, that those are met because that's concerning, okay. And then natural resources, I think the connectivity to the surrounding neighborhood overall, you put a lot of thought into it, we talked about ways to improve that, but I think that you put a lot of thought and have made progress in that way. And I like that you're preserving those trees, which I know is required, but there's some beautiful trees on that property. And the addition of your landscaping, I think, will make it a very attractive project. So generally, I support it as well.
Thank you, agree with a lot of the conversation we've, we've heard this evening. One thing that I would also highlight is that, you know, the Littleton's Inclusionary Zoning Ordinance, which, for those not familiar with the term, requires a certain percentage of all residential development to be affordable to people who earn less than the area median income. And we set it in Littleton at 5%. And in my observation of projects, while that is lower than many other communities' requirements, what I've observed here in Littleton is that projects actually provide those affordable housing units. Whereas in communities that have a higher threshold, say 10%, 15%, often developers are buying their way out through cash and lieu. I've seen a lot of projects in Denver where instead of providing actual units for people earning less than area median income, they just pay money into a fund and eventually Denver may develop a project or not, depending on how much money they have. So while it is a fairly modest percentage, I've been really encouraged by actually seeing projects that are providing those units as this one is proposing. And so that's an element of our ordinance that I do appreciate, that it's actually effective on the ground. As others have noted, this proposal, it aligns with the zoning on the property, with the comprehensive plan designation on the property. I do have some concerns that I articulated in my questioning about the internal circulation and particularly along that northern property line to provide people more of a direct access to that north-south connection to the commercial. Because the goal is that if you're in proximity in your multifamily to the commercial area, that it's very easy to get there. And the shortest path is often the best path. And I will not go to the measure of proposing an amendment to require full cutoff light fixtures on the building. I'll trust the staff to, to implement that in coordination with the applicant. And yes, I find that this meets a criterion we'll be supporting. And with that, I will activate the voting on the main motion as amended.
The vote is six in favor, the motion carries as amended.
All right, thank you, and thank you especially to those of you who took time out of your Monday evening and were not paid to be here and to speak on the project. The public process and public discussion of these sorts of proposals is so important to everybody in Littleton. So thank you so much for, for being here this evening. With that, we'll move to comments and reports, Community Development Director, staff.
Yeah, thank you very much. I do not have much in the way of updates this evening, but I'll be curious to hear about the, or to have that discussion about the study session.
So, yes, and I will, I will ask about that in a moment. City Attorney, City Clerk?
None. There will be a meeting on May 13th, but no meeting on May 27th because it's Memorial Day. So just prepping you for May.
All right, yeah, commission members, any updates? No, all right. And then, no updates from me. So a question for staff, is 10 minutes enough to do justice to the study session? I'm inclined to say probably not, but...
I, I think it would be challenging to get it accomplished in 10 minutes. I must admit, I did have some coffee at about 6:15, so, you know, I can speak fast, but...
So I'll, I'll look around at the other commissioners. Any concerns with postponing the study session to another meeting? Okay. All right, so without enough time to adequately provide good discussion on the study session topic, we will reschedule the study session for another date. Please make it so, staff. And with no further business, I will close this meeting at 9:43 PM. Thank you all.